Great, thank you. We've just come out of closed session. I am going to use the chair's prerogative and I'm going to move up general business action item number one on our agenda to be determined right now, decision on personnel matter, and I would entertain a motion.
Okay, Bill. I'd like to make the motion to continue the appeal until later mediation.
Thank you. All right, motion made by Commissioner Winfield, second from Commissioner McCurdy. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously with Commissioner Dean absent. All right, it is four seventeen. I'm actually going to recess for three minutes until four twenty. When we come back, we will get to the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District meeting promptly and then continue with our regular meeting.
I am going to leave the meeting.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Mary.
Hey, shit, you're recording.
That's okay, they're waiting to capture the motion on the recording.
It's captured.
Okay. Maybe some years, I think it's like She might have brought a hand initially. What about our file cabinets? What was this, the hot snacks? On a forty six. The caffeine free wants to last forever.
These are starting to get
Yeah, I can complete the house.
You're gonna be here for eight hours. Not eight hours.
That's true.
Oh, there's the car? Yes. I
You're shaking. Sorry, that's fine. I hadn't noticed. Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I didn't just I'm not gonna do it next time. So not on the horizon at the moment? Oh, like your former associate or? And it's just goes, it's just really, really hard to find people who want to be a assistant prosecutor down here. Oh, yeah, thanks, God. I appreciate it, yeah. All right, let's All right, it is four twenty two. I will now commence or I will open our Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Board Meeting, May twenty first. Present are Commissioners Kevin Walker, Evan Clapper, Bill Winfield, Tricia Dean, Mike McCurdy, and myself, Jacques Hadler, as well as County Attorney Stephen Stocks and County Administrator Mallory Nassau. I believe we also have Chief Markham on Zoom. Our first our first item of business is citizens to be heard. If you are a citizen who wants to be heard on Thompson Fire District, I'll give you the floor right now. Anyone here to be heard on Thompson? Anyone on Zoom? Looks like that's it on that. We'll move on to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from our April sixteenth Thompson meeting, the minutes were in the packet. Consent agenda item two is approval of Thompson bills. Those total bills amount to ninety five dollars and eighty six tenths cents. Total payroll amounts to one thousand seven hundred ninety nine dollars and seventy eight cents for a combined bills payroll of one thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars and sixty four cents. I'd entertain a motion to approve consent agenda. So moved. Thank you. Motion from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner McCurdy. All those in favor of approval of consent, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. We are on to our fire teacher report, so I will turn it over to Chief Markham on Zoom. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. So I'll start right off with the recent incidents. On April thirtieth, we had a brush fire at I seventy, a small brush fire at my marker two twenty one. And then on Mother's Day, May twelfth, at about five P M, a brush fire broke out right inside Thompson, right into town. It started on two sides of the tracks. I was actually working for the Moab Fire Department here in Moab at the time. I got the call, so we headed out immediately. I was able to contact two residents in Thompson who have been firefighters in the past, directed them to get two of our engines that were ready to go. And they were able to get those and structures were threatened right away, so they were able to keep the fire out of structures. We got there, I assume, command, and then we're able to knock the fire down and keep it from spreading. It ended up being about four point five acres. But we were there, we were there well into the night. Moab Valley Fire Department, besides the engine I was on, sent two engines. The Moab B L M sent an engine and the state sent an engine. We also had Grand County Sheriff's deputies and U H P there, which was great in case we need to do evacuations. We got a little lucky with the way the wind was blowing. If it would have been blowing more of the north or south, it's very possible it would have got into structures. We also had a resident with a tractor who was able to to put in some fire lines. So that was a, that was a little bit harrowing, to say the least, but it all worked out in the end, so happy about that. Kudos to the residents of Thompson for springing into action.
Any idea what circuit that work?
We had a fire investigator there for the B L M and they determined it was a train. We actually had some, I guess, visitors there that videotaped the fire starting, so pretty confident that's, that's what started. It did start on both sides of the tracks. There was actually three separate fires, kind of separated by by a little bit unburned fuel, so yeah, it could, it could have been a lot worse. And luckily, it was a Sunday, people were home and able to help out with that, so.
Yeah.
So yeah, as you're speaking of that, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark. Stephen had a question for you.
Go ahead.
Did you refer to the County Sheriff's Department for investigation?
No, for that, we usually use a B L M investigator or a Forest Service investigator. So that's just how ours usually work. There was deputies there, but I think when it comes to fire stuff, they if we have an official fire investigator there, then that's what we use.
It also can be filed with the state by office charges as well, just keeping that a note.
Okay.
And our fires caused by trains, is that common around there?
Um, it happens. Sometimes they just start the railroad ties on fire, but other times, you know, they'll, they'll throw sparks. Maybe their brakes are really hot or something. I'm not sure what, what happens, but there's so much dry fuel out there so close to the tracks. I mean, I'm talking the whole desert out there, most of the desert out there, that it's, it's not uncommon for trains to start fires historically for, for years and years.
Great, thanks, Mark. I'll let you continue.
Sure. Just training wise, we've been hitting the wildland stuff hard for good reason. Training a lot on that, and then I've, I've been working with my new firefighter on getting his structured firefighter skills signed off too. The equipment is all in good working order. And as far as fires go, I've spoken to this a few times in past meetings, but the vegetation in Thompson is dry and plentiful. We have last year's grass crop that was pretty high and it dried out and it's, it's back. And then we do have a new crop of cheat grass out there. So most of the residents are pretty good about cleaning up their property. It's the, the non-residents, landowners that don't do anything on their property, so those, those grasses accumulate. And that's, if you drive out there, you'll see through the town, there's areas where it's just pockets of fuel. So I don't know how we can accomplish notifying them and getting them to clear out their properties. But yeah, that's, that's a concern of mine for sure, and we're, we're not even in the heart of the fire season yet, so. And then I'd like to speak to some of the council members in the future about a town cleanup day like we've had in the past, where we get big dumpsters out there and clean up what we can, so I'll be contacting a couple of you at least. I know we've done it in the past. Trish has been really helpful. And we'll try to maybe get that for the, the end of summer or the beginning of fall. If possible.
Great, yeah, we'd be happy to talk to you about that, Mark. Thanks. Yeah, I think in the past, there was a few different players that kind of contributed to that. Correct? And yeah, so if we can kind of get all the folks involved again, that'd be great. We've discussed that a little bit with the amendment to plot out there also. Yeah.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you so much, Mark. Good work, man.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have anything else on our Thompson agenda, so I will adjourn that meeting. And I will reconvene our regular Grand County Commission meeting. Everyone present are the same as we're at the Thompson meeting. All rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to citizens to be heard. This is our regular citizens to be heard section for any, anyone who like to speak, we'll give you three minutes. Just raise your hand or unmute on Zoom, and I'll give you the floor. Anyone here in the chambers who is here to speak as a concerned citizen? All right, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make a statement? Okay, last call in the chambers. No one here for citizens to be heard? Great, we will move on to our presentations, and our presentation today is by our Planning and Zoning Department on water-wise landscape requirements. So I'd welcome Alisa and Kate.
Um, little background for you, just to set this up. In twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, the Utah Legislature, Legislature boosted efforts initiated by Utah watersavers to provide landscape incentives for their turf buyback program by providing funds for landscape conversion. This program cites that sixty percent of the state's residential water usage goes towards outdoor irrigation. And okay. No worries. So in order to be eligible for these incentives, the county would have to adopt a water-efficient landscape ordinance, which meets the minimum state requirements. And once adopted, residents would be eligible for these rebates. The updated ordinance, at a minimum, needs to include the, these three basic requirements, which include no lawn on parking strips, no more than fifty percent of front and side and rear yard landscape area, and new residential developments is lawn. New commercial, industrial, institutional, multifamily development, common area landscapes, lawn areas shall not exceed twenty percent of the total landscape area. So many other counties and cities in Utah have implemented new landscaping ordinance to take ordinances to take advantage of this program, as well as to address water scarcity more generally. The city of Moab updated its ordinance in August of twenty twenty three with this goal, and its requirements go significantly beyond those necessary for the turf buyback program. The city of St. George and Washington County similarly, similarly have implemented much more significant restrictions than what is required by the state's policy. So in the fall last year, planning staff did come before the commission and we discussed going forward with a landscape ordinance to update the Land Use Code, Section six point four. We did get the go-ahead by the commission to start developing that. And since then, planning staff led here by Katie or Vista, largely spearheaded by her, have developed a draft ordinance in consultation with the Planning Commission and a multitude of stakeholders. Sorry. Here we go. List of stakeholders, so I'll let Katie talk about that.
Yeah, I will go through and list everybody. You can see the list here, but I have done my best to consult with a wide variety of folks who are experts on various issues on various sides of the landscaping question. I've talked to the Utah D N R, people who are experts in fire safety from the Fire Department and the D N R, folks that are experts in wildland conservation, people who are coming from more of a gardening and landscaping perspective, both on the sort of more permaculture end of things, also on the more sort of like desert landscape side of things, and folks who are experts in working with drainage. Definitely, I've talked to some contractors trying to look through and have them imagine what this ordinance would be like to enact, what the potential pitfalls or things that would be expensive or complicated for them would be, and how we can work around that. And yeah, so trying to, trying to get a really mixed and balanced set of eyes on this, that, that is a continuous effort. I have a couple more meetings set up for the following weeks. But yeah, I really, I think this, this ordinance has really benefited from, from this set of perspectives. So we want to get a little bit into, why do we want to go a little bit further than what the basic requirements were from the Utah turf buyback program? So the turf buyback program really focuses on culinary water. And it doesn't even focus, like, the, the basic requirements do not even do that much for preserving culinary water. The amount of turf that's allowed by the by the state's ordinance is still quite a bit. And it's also some of the, some of the restrictions they put in place are not actually that clear, easy to follow, like talking about the landscaped area. We went a little bit further, tried to make very clear what landscape area accounts as and what it doesn't. But we also wanted to address some other issues that are related to landscaping. And the preservation of the valuable aquifer is essential and really important in addition to preserving culinary aquifer, culinary water aquifer, like the Glen Canyon Aquifer. And the valuable aquifer is getting more and more saline. This is a huge issue for agriculture, and it's a huge ecological issue. We really need to preserve aquifer levels in the valley as well, as in Glen Canyon. And then also there's other landscape issues that affect human health here and ecological issues that are really important. So that's fugitive dust, huge problem, flooding, water quality related to flooding. Fire, we just heard from, you know, Thompson Springs, obviously cheat grass is a huge issue in the spread of fires. So we really do need to be looking at all of this in relationship to the landscape ordinance. I think it would be a missed opportunity not to address these issues or landscaping ordinance.
So as far as the way we've kind of organized our ideas about this ordinance, we have a few things that we wanted to keep in mind. So one of those is landscaping and drainage go hand in hand. So we're actually looking at combining our drainage section with the landscaping section. Right now, it's set up as landscaping and fencing, which I think fencing should go with screening, so we're kind of rearranging those sections to make, make a little bit more sense and to flow better. We really want to focus on encouraging folks when they're looking at landscaping to be thinking about how the water flows through their property and how they can that can be, you know, preserved in terms of natural drainage, but it also could be beneficial to the, the landscape itself, in terms of the plants. So we also want to ensure that these requirements do not incur additional costs that would fall back onto the, the end user, so we don't want to create a situation where these are costly requirements for developers and builders and and that would actually increase the cost of, for the home buyer. So we definitely have been learning some lessons from the city of Moab and some of their recent applications of this, of their requirements and kind of the pitfalls and trying to pay attention to that. We also want to make sure that enforcement is easy enough, like, we don't want to be increasing our burden on staff too much. It's going to be a little bit of an increase, obviously, but we have to be careful just to not, you know, start requiring things that are like really unenforceful or extra burdensome. And then with disturbed versus undisturbed, so these are the two kind of main concepts with the landscaping ordinance, where we define these areas on each property. So disturbed is any land that has paving, building, grading, made of vegetation, any, any historical disturbance on the land that basically resulted in the removal of the natural vegetation. And then undisturbed areas, obviously, is just an area that's in its natural vegetative state. And then we do encourage that in the ordinance, we encourage and incentivize really preserving as much of the undisturbed area as possible.
So, yeah, so something that we realized going through this process is that the undisturbed areas are the areas that are functioning really well still. And these are areas that don't need additional input. You don't need to be watering them. You don't need to be weeding them. They are infiltrating water properly. They're moving water properly through the landscape. They're not adding to pollution. And so these are areas that, if anything, we want to maintain like that as much as possible, because as soon as an area becomes disturbed, you start to have all these other issues, and these are the issues that we see faced by a lot of folks who live in the valley. Huge weed problems, it being really expensive to maintain that land in a way that doesn't become problematic. So as much as we can, we want to stop people from having to get into this situation of having this expensive, complicated thing that they have to deal with.
Exactly, yeah, thank you. Okay, so as far as you know, who, what kind of development or when would this ordinance be triggered to be applicable? So basically, any new construction, it would be for residential and commercial development, but it would really only, we would only apply to areas where we have rapid developments, such as Spanish Valley, south of Moab to northern, north one ninety one corridor. Potentially Thompson Springs if they start getting water, but that would be in the future. But yeah, those areas we would, otherwise, the outlying areas of the county would be exempt from this. Doesn't make sense to require these kinds of standards in the outlying areas necessarily. So we also were, we, we had originally included a requirement to include existing development in terms of coming into compliance. If they altered their they expanded their use or built something like an accessory dwelling unit, then they, you know, typically you would treat that as a non-compliant, they would have to come into compliance, but we're actually thinking at this point as a way to keep things simple and less just, I guess, burdensome on existing resident, residents to just do away with that completely. So as a way to avoid those complex requirements, we would just exempt existing development for now. And that could be changed. That could be something you could add later on and make it apply to existing development, but I think just starting out, this would just be a good trial period, just to, to try out on new construction.
And this is something that we've definitely learned from looking at the process of what the city of Moab has gone through, that a lot of the really difficult issues are not actually the new developments. It's, you know, folks who have added a porch or something like that. And so if we did at some point want to add requirements for coming into compliance, I think we would be much better at it. Once we've had a year or more to look at how this pans out, what's hard, what's easy, what actually works, what doesn't work.
We would also be exempting facilities such as schools, athletic areas, cemeteries, golf courses, parks, public recreation facilities, but we would still want to require that those areas be irrigated with non-culinary water and then also be planted with drought tolerant grass species, something that would be part of the plant list that would be included in this. So also exempted would be permitted, permitted commercial agriculture and cultivation of pasture for commercial livestock, personal edible or medicinal gardens. And then the last one that we've kind of gone back and forth on in conversations at the Planning Commission is, do we exempt secondary water users? Most secondary water users wells, they're pulling water from the valley fill aquifer. That could be a concern that we'd want to be thinking about. So I think that would be good to get your input on at some point. It's whether that should be exempt, exempted or actually didn't. And basically, if it was, if secondary water users were included in the requirements, it would just be a matter of regulating their plant species. It's not limiting their amount of water that they can use. It would just be beholden to the, the plant species that are in the list.
So and secondary water user means someone with their own well or?
Or that is hooked up to the secondary water system.
Okay, Ken's like, thanks.
Yeah, sorry. That would be through Kinsley.
Kinsley Moab Irrigation Company or?
Yeah, something to consider. So our general requirements, you can kind of follow along in the handout that we gave you, the draft language. We have, first of all, we talk about drainage and make sure that, like I said earlier, that that people are, are thinking about how their stormwater is moving through the property, making sure that with there's areas for infiltration and if possible, rainwater catchment. We have turf grass limits. This was kind of a, one of those contentious issues at the Planning Commission, where we discussed you know, what the threshold should be for turf grass and residential development. A lot of people like their grass and what we live in the desert, so there's, there's definitely kind of a A lot of people like their grass and what we live in the desert. So there's, there's definitely kind of a, um, a back and forth going on with the. What that threshold should be. But right now in the ordinance, um, language, I believe it's a hundred and fifty. Square feet per bedroom is what we settled on and then five hundred or five hundred up to five. Yeah, or it's pretty small. When you think about it, it's, it's like a. Uh, but then you could get a bonus if you went, if you were able to use your rain, rainwater, harvested rainwater or gray water. Recycled green water that you could go up to a thousand square feet.
And these numbers, um, in this sort of approach to thinking about this was an attempt to really balance the idea of turf grass as an amenity. Um, with the fact that, you know, turf grass is an expensive amenity, you know, water wise. And so it's something that potentially a lot of people really feel attached to and potentially should, you know, should be something that we're saying should be fairly distributed. And so doing it by bedroom would have to do, would be as close as we could get to thinking about, okay, what are the number of people who are living on this plot? How do we give them a fair amount of grass for the number of people that are living there with an additional bonus? Uh, for, you know, if they're using these water wise practices, you know, maybe you could have an extra, a little bit extra.
Exactly. So um, the other general requirements that apply to all properties um in the, the area that we uh identified. Is that irrigation systems shall be designed effectively, preventing water waste and overwatering. So we encourage secondary water connection where that's possible. And also the implementation of gray water, rain, rainwater harvesting is incentivized within the language. Um, and then maintenance, of course, we, as we stated earlier, the. One of the main goals is to incentivize um the preservation of the natural vegetation on the, on the properties. So, um, you know, maintaining your, if, if you do have areas of natural vegetation, then maintaining that is very important. Um, and then if that gets uh converted at some point, that would become part of the disturbed area. So here we have our disturbed land requirements. This is kind of the, the gist of the um, the requirements for. Commercial and uh residential developments would be seventy-five percent of the disturbed area, which should be covered with some kind of. Some type of ground cover. Um, do you wanna talk about the types? Cause that, that is, there's a wide variety.
Okay, so um, the sort of main types that, that tend to be used for these applications are uh stone gravel. Uh, woodchip or reject sand. Uh, and each of these has um a little bit of a unique character. Uh, uh, woodchips are generally considered most appropriate for more riparian areas. Uh, for places where you're trying to grow food or sort of like increase the, the, the growing potential of the land underneath. It is a material that does transform over time, the ecosystem, a little bit more. Away from being a sort of classic desert ecosystem and more towards being a riparian ecosystem. Um, so if that's what you're going for, that's an option. Um, if what you're going for is something that's very simple, um, gravel is, is an easy one. Um, another issue with the uh, with the woodchip is that it does tend to blow away. Um, so we're trying to give people options for trying to figure out what's, what's best in their particular area. Um, and then recently I discovered, um, Erin Barnum, uh, a landscaper that I was talking to. Uh, recommended reject sand uh as a really particularly useful one for this area. Um, probably the most similar to what the natural ground cover would be in this area while still keeping down the dust. Um, and really easy to remove weeds from. Uh, gravel is famously difficult to remove weeds from. Uh, so all in, basically we're trying to give people options who live in different areas of the county that may have their own. Uh, sort of opportunities and challenges in terms of like the valley, really, really complicated in terms of weeds. Uh, so we wanna give people the option uh to use a thing that is best suited for them.
Yeah, yeah, definitely building in some flexibility was the goal here. Um, so in, with the ground cover, that may also be just plant life. So it's a combination of, of what Katie just described and then plant life as well. So all your, your trees and your, your plants that you wanna have on your landscaping. Um, and so minimum of, would, a minimum of twenty percent would be required just for the plant life. And that's because we don't necessarily want to have, like, just all uh inorganic ground cover. Where you're creating more of that heat island effect in that way. So um, having a minimum about, amount of plant life and that can include your trees, your full tree canopy. Can count towards that square footage. So it actually adds up pretty quickly. It doesn't require a whole lot of plants.
And the idea behind uh the minimum plant life is also that uh we don't wanna necessarily be destroying biodiversity. You know, we live in a desert, but the desert is actually naturally a very biodiverse place. Um, so that's eh sort of an alternative in that there's, in terms of disturbance and, you know. Going back to a time before the land was disturbed, that's very, very difficult, as anybody who's sort of employed in regeneration will tell you. And potentially impossible in some places. So what we're trying to do with these disturbed land requirements is to create. Um, a way to mitigate most of the main problems, ecological and health problems that are associated with disturbance. Uh, which is not necessarily the same as restoration, um, but to provide these sort of um benchmarks. That can kind of fill in instead of a restoration benchmark. So if you say you're providing habitat through this, you know, twenty percent of living. Living material, then that, that is having an ecosystemic function. Um, I also wanted to speak a little bit to the actual numbers. These are not random. Um, I spent a long time looking at um BLM AIM assessment sites. So the BLM has hundreds of assessment sites acco- across the, the county where they have these, um, like one meter by one meter squares. Where they do probes within the square and they'll say at any of these uh particular spots, there was this percentage of bare ground. This percentage of plant cover, uh, what type of plant cover it was. Um, and so these are actually averages of what those sites had for the areas that are going to be required to come into compliance. So basically, we're trying to get numbers that are somewhat approximate of what like a reference zone in that area would, would be.
Thank you for that background. Um, so the disturbed land requirements go on to offer a restoration alternative. Where you can actually just go ahead and try uh attempt to bring in um the native vegetation. It's obviously not, like Katie said, it's not possible to fully restore a property in the desert. That takes millions of years, but um, you can start the process anyway. So that would be an option. Um, the plant species, uh, we do, we, as part of this ordinance, we would have a, a plant list. Um, that's being developed now, and I think that that will be a, a source of discussion for sure in the future. Uh, but at least ninety percent of all the plants, um, ground cover plants would need to be from the plant list. And then, of course, the weeds requirement. So just in, in line with the counties, um, already we have an ordinance. Um, requiring the mitigation of weeds on your property, but it actually doesn't go as far as saying to remove the weeds. It just asks people to cut the weeds down. Um, so this would go further to, um. To encourage uh actually eradicating the most noxious and egregious weeds on your property. Um, so this was a, um, just an exercise in, in working through the calculations. To kind of give an example of what these numbers would look like on the ground. Um, so for a one acre property, which is pretty common in the valley, um, I, I chose to. Uh, as an example, a twenty-five hundred, the construction of a twenty-five hundred square foot home. Some accessory, accessory structures totaling one thousand square feet and paved area covering three thousand square feet. Which sounds like a lot, but I actually did some measuring um on GIS and I, a lot of driveways and paved concrete areas. Um, on properties existing are, are about that size. So, um. But any combination of that could add up to about six thousand five hundred square feet of like structures and, and pavement. So when you take that out of the, the total s- square footage of an acre, you're, you end up with thirty seven, thirty-seven thousand some square feet. Um, and then multiply that by seventy-five percent. So your total um area that you'd be. Um, required to put ground cover is twenty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-five. Uh, and so within that you can do, uh, you would have a minimum of seven thousand four hundred twelve square feet. This is twenty percent of the total disturbed area. So that would be for the living plants. And then the remaining twenty thousand and some square feet would need to be previous ground cover. So this is all like in our process right now, I'm trying to test this out on different sized parcels. And model it um with some actual visual aids to see what that would look like. See how, if we're actually making this too hard or if it's easy enough, um, if it's realistic and reasonable. That's what we've got right now. So still a lot of work to be done. Um, we've come a long ways, but it's. You know, we're, we've got a lot of different projects going on. So uh, we hope to get this um through the process soon. I think we just have a few more planning commission meetings to um hash out some of these, the last remaining pieces. Um, we do wanna, like I said, model some of these uh requirements to see what they would actually look like on the ground, make sure they're feasible. Uh, draft the landscape, uh, plant submittal requirements. That's part of the lan- the language in the actual section of the code. Um, and then fine tune how we're gonna be implementing this as far as enforcement. Um, updating and integrating the drainage section with the county engineers feedback. There are some uh updates in the drainage section that are, are very needed, um, that we've identified. So we wanna try to take care of those as well and then.
And then lastly, the landscape manual. Um, so one of the things that we've tried to do is in order to keep the ordinance itself as simple. As easy, as easy to follow as possible, we're really only, only including requirements in, in the, in the ordinance itself. And we've filled this landscape manual, or we're working on filling it with all kinds of best management practices, suggestions, diagrams. That people can look at as they please, and we can also change over time if we get new information. Um, so there are some places in the uh, in the ordn- in the text of the ordinance where it says like, for the design of the irrigation system refers to the landscape manual. And then that's something that we can fine tune as, you know, as times change.
Yes, exactly. And it's adaptable so that if we wanted to change those. Um, practices or standards, we wouldn't have to go through a whole land use code amendment to do that. We can just make the changes.
And we also wanna make it so that like the basic requirements are available in, in, in terms of what we're actually requiring of everybody. Are available in the ordinance itself, but there's probably plenty of people who wanna go farther. Um, and wanna learn more about, you know, how can I retain more water in my soil? How can I, uh? You know, uh, use best management practices for restoration or something like that. All that is gonna be in the landscape manual. Um, so being able to sort of like separate out audiences in that way. Uh, and there's a little bit of text on the next one about just, this is an example of, um, so far with the sort of general table of contents of the. Uh, basically a lot of stuff to, to help you um follow the ordinance. So, you know, how do you decide if areas of your landscape are disturbed or undisturbed? Uh, and you know, how do you actually, some diagrams help you visualize these percentage requirements that we're talking about with ground cover for disturbed areas?
Yes, questions. We were gonna open it up to questions. I don't have questions, I just have a couple of comments.
Okay.
The amount of work that Katie's done is unbelievable.
It is.
And all the people that she's reached out to, all the people that have given feedback, like Dale took her on a field trip. And it, it's, she's done just an unbelievable amount of work. Um, I think in the end, when you really look at it, it, and I think the feed, kind of general feedback was like simplify, simplify. And I, I think it, it is getting simplified. I think the manual will be complex. But that being said, I think it's just education, specifically if you think about developers from out of town that are coming in. And really understanding our, our environment, you know, this idea of disturbed and undisturbed. I think it's, I think it's great just to have that education piece for people that are coming in and, and aren't from here, right? And, and what's, and what's, you know, most appropriate for this environment. So I, I think it's coming along and I think she's been really receptive to feedback from everybody. So, thanks. It's not that.
From my, my point of view, it looks important thing is to make it simple enough for. Uh, not only people to comply with it, but code enforcement to comply with it, and then ultimately a, a judge report. I don't know that anybody would spend the money to try and challenge it, but we wanna make sure the language is simplified enough. Though when we look at some of these options, we really wanna tighten up what the options are. As you said, in certain areas, it's riparian versus other areas, we have different exceptions, what they can utilize. And so wanna kind of just tighten things up and I hate to provide less options, but we wanna solidify options. So I think it's, it looks phenomenal. It's like a tremendous amount of work. Only downside is at the end of the day, we need to make sure whatever the end product is. And, and I, and that, that's the other thing that I encourage the commission to understand as well is, um, you know, not only is writing the policy up. And having it placed, but then also uh ensuring that code compliance has the ability to go and enforce that, has the backing of the commission. That's my thoughts, but it looks like a tremendous amount of work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I, I've got a couple of thoughts and you might have mentioned that you left agriculture out of this. I think you did. Um, and then another thought I had, there's only one landscape company in town or source. Do they meet the requirements that you're asking for? Because most homeowners are just gonna go out to wild landscapes. And buy whatever they're selling and go plant. So I, I, that would be something I would consider. The other thing is that your list of people that you consulted, there weren't any contractors on there. Now, there was a li- landscape contractor, but they typically don't do the development. And so I'm wondering about.
We did have Steve from Murphy Flats. He did advise on in terms of.
Which still hired a contractor to do his project, but I'm saying that there's definitely a bunch of old school contractors here.
I think it'd be great.
Ben Burr, Mike Johnston, you know, just different ones.
I actually have a meeting with Ben coming up.
Cool, so, and then the last one was your one acre where you did all of the math on it. Most one acres, when you go buy an acre, aren't bare land. So you're moving a house into a piece of land that's already got native vegetation. Usually, you gotta be careful that we're asking somebody to do a bunch of work. We don't want them disturbed in the native.
That's why she has the disturbed and the disturbed.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And in the landscape manual, there's a checklist that'll help people go through and be like, okay, how do you isolate areas of your land that are undisturbed? And show that in your application materials so that you don't actually have any requirements for those areas.
Right, and then I guess the last point would be is, simple is better. Simple is gonna be better for the homeowners and one of the simplest ways that we could encourage some of this is with the price of water.
You mean, like, just with the, with the.
We have very cheap water, as long as water is as cheap as it is here. People are gonna water their lawns. And so we encourage people to come out of that.
I think Gu- Guissa is going to be raising their rates.
I think they did it already. Speak real quick to Whistle raising their rates. Do you mind speaking, giving just a two minute blip on that? Whistle did just raise their rates and the tier insists, do you mind coming up and just speaking to that real quick? Just for, I mean, just a bit, you know, just, they did just raise their rates by, by quite a bit for certain tiers.
Uh, yes, so the first three tiers, and this is just culinary residential water. Uh, were raised eight percent, is my understanding. Uh, at least the first three tiers, it could be the first four. I'm sorry, I don't have that exact information with me right at this moment. Uh, the upper three or four tiers, we raised by twenty-five percent. And that amount is gonna go a, a dollar each year per uh one thousand gallons is what I'm talking about of use. Residential use. Now, those uh amounts also extend to commercial and other uses as well. So, yes.
I agree with you. So our water is really cheap and, and so we were acknowledging that. They did just a great, great job of studying that. Raising rates on large water users.
Dale, could you, uh, just also just introduce yourself and uh tell us who you are just for the record? Oh, I'm sorry, just.
I'm Dale Weiss and I'm on the board of uh Grand Water.
Thank you very much. Uh, Kevin.
Yeah, so, um, you know, first of all, like everyone's saying, you know, impressive work and all, all that's great. Um, I, I do. I do have some misgivings that it's getting like, you know, too complicated or requiring too much. And I'll say more about that in a moment. I, I actually strongly agree with what Bill said that I think if you were to talk to people who don't care at all about saving water, just build houses. That would give you some really valuable feedback on which parts of this are onerous, which are not. And I, I think, and, and also anything, you know, sometimes, you know, once you understand the regulation, it's not a big deal. But even just understanding what you need to do can be a big burden on people. So I, I think that would give you some ideas about, you know, streamlining it or. I, I think that was a thrust of what, what, so I.
Yeah.
I second that.
Um.
I, let's see, one, could you email a copy of, um, this? We, we don't do paper these days, we like electronic copies, so, um, that, that'd be great if you do that after the meeting. You had a requirement that, you know, ninety percent of the plants had to be, um, you know, from, from a list. But how, how are you measuring ninety percent? Is it by, you know, volume or area or individual species?
Individual, uh, plants, so.
So if you've got some kind of small ground cover.
We've got ten bushes, none of them have to be from the plant list.
Okay, but if I've got some kind of ground cover, and there's, I've got like, you know, five hundred little tiny plants that. That would give me my ninety percent, even though it just covers three square feet.
That's something that we. Yeah, I mean, I would have to comply with the coverage requirements as well.
Okay, so that's what I was asking, is it individual plant species or coverage or some com- I, I, I think it's really har- hard to quantify those things, so. So I was thinking about if we're ever.
Those are definitely things we, we wanna take a better look at in terms of, when I said we were gonna be modeling some of these, like. Trying to actually implement the ordinance ourselves, um, through some different examples, um, I think those things will start to come out more. Work, work on refining, for sure, cause you don't necessarily think about these things until you start. Putting down on paper or on the ground, except if you're Kevin Walker, then you're always thinking about all of it.
Um, okay, and very similar comment about stream width, you know, I think Pat Creek changes width quite a bit, so do we just have an. Official thing that, you know, in Spanish Valley, it's officially three feet wide, or do you have to go and measure the creek near your house?
Are you talking about the perennial area requirements?
You, you had some requirement that, that some, something applied within twice the string width of a.
So that language all comes from the state, there's just.
Oh, oh, so that's one of the things.
There's state standards that, um, that guide you in how to measure that, and it's, it's, it wouldn't be us just making.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand if it's. Another, another thing I wonder, wonder is, um, whether it makes sense to do the more stringent or detailed requirements for larger developments. Say bigger than an acre or bigger than three acres or something, cause it, it does seem like quite a lot for someone who's just, you know, bought a one acre lot. Well, I mean, I mean, maybe as Bill points out, it's probably already mostly native vegetation, and you just have to be sure not to scrape out. Too much of that, that, that seems simple, but the, the other things. This seem unnecessarily complex, and I wanna make, you know, I'm, I'm definitely sympathetic with the goals, same, I've, you know, I. Don't, don't use much water myself, I have zero turf, I preserve every bit of native vegetation I can on the two places I, I've lived, but I. I think, um, you know, land use. In, in Grand Canyon, we tend to not be real strict about, um. This sort of issue or, you know, the, what color buildings are, that, that kind of thing, sort of. And I let people do what they wanna do, and I, I understand water usage affects everybody, um. But, but then again, and another thought I have, there's this issue of demand hardening, which is if, if we conserve too much water now. Then we want, it'll be difficult to conserve additional water for required to in the future. Um, and so, I. I just think it needs to be thought through, care, I mean, I, I don't think this is, you know, approaching, you know, sort of maximum water conservation, and it only applies to. To new, to new lots, but you know, one can imagine, you know, a sort of dry future where. I mean, this, this already happens in California, where just basically everybody has to cut twenty percent, no matter what, and if you've already. Got your water usage really low, cutting twenty percent is very, very hard versus, you know, if it just means, you know, making your lawn smaller than it or. You know, it can be easy, so. Um, so anyway, I, 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 I guess my o- overall message is I, I just. You wouldn't wanna do something that makes people's lives miserable because it's so complicated and hard to.
We don't want that as our goal either.
Yeah, and, and, and also just not. Not conserving as much as we possibly can too early because we might have to do additional con- water conservation, yeah, thirty years from now or something.
Okay, I like, I, I appreciate all of that feedback, and I, even though I didn't get to write it down, I have it, have it.
Yeah, I would, uh, weigh in a little too, and this is also, uh, in support of the, the thing, and just trying to get it. Right first time, um, you had mentioned at the beginning that there was funds available for this?
So, um, it, the funds have to do with the rebate program, and that's for existing. Development, so any residential or commercial existing development could go through the Utah's, uh, water saver program and. They're turked by that, so they can take out some turf and then get some funds. But, but, but that's like a whole different, that's like a side effect of having this ordinance in place.
So in order to get the rebates for ripping out turf, you have to adopt.
The county has to have a, a water landscaping ordinance with those bare minimum requirements that I stated at the beginning.
And then, a lot of times it looked like you kind of avoided using the word required and focused more on encouraging. And, uh.
Isn't that ordinance itself?
Yeah, or in some of the drafts, and so I was wondering what that encouragement might look like.
Well. Um, I think, so I think there's areas where there's some, like, in terms of the undisturbed. Land and incentivizing the preservation of that, that was, that's an in- incentive based kind of.
Is that a financial incentive or a?
I would say, yeah, it does come down to that, and it's, and it's also so that like, like if you're going in to build. Uh, your home, and a lot of times we'll see people just, and developers especially, will just scrape. The lot totally created, scrape it from all of its vegetation, why, why do that? That's not necessary, you could be more careful. And leave some of that vegetation, and then, then there you have like a bunch of your, you have a percentage of live plant cover and ground cover. That's already there without you having to do anything.
Yeah.
That's one of the ways.
The incentive is that you have to comply with requirements for any disturbed area, so you are therefore incentivized to keep. Undisturbed areas undisturbed.
Okay, so it's the big stick, and they, uh, um. I would say that, uh, like, knowing. Going through the dark skies ordinance and that adoption, and once that went into place, we got a lot of people in the room and a lot of feedback, and. There was a lot of folks that were, um, uh, you know, kind of old timers that. Uh, were resistant to changing things, you know, and so I'd really stress this for new projects.
Yeah, that's why we have it right now, it would just be for new construction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, I would also say to look at, I wouldn't necessarily give a free pass to all the. Turf intensive things, being on the cemetery board, we get a lot of pushback about watering there. The ball fields out at the arena gets a lot of pushback for watering, and so I think that, you know, um. Uh, if I was a citizen being asked, I am a citizen being asked to, you know, trim the fat, it's hard to kind of buy in. When there's just sprinklers running in the rain and stuff like that, so, um, and then. The public entities are one thing, and then also like private entities, like golf courses and stuff, I think that there should be, um. It shouldn't just necessarily be a hall pass for, um, when everybody else is tightening their belts.
Right.
Um, and then my last little thing also kind of goes to some of the stakeholders. Uh, I would encourage, uh, some, or have, were there health department representatives?
No, we did reach out.
Yeah, I, I was checking real quick, um, and, uh, seeing from. The water guys, the state water guys say all gray water systems in Utah require a permit from local health department. Uh, the water rights division says to collect and store and place capture, pre-sip. A person must register with the division of water rights, and so there's gonna be a lot of other like hoops like that, there are, you know, but. Might kind of be like, if you're. You might wanna get them on board sooner than let just the right hand start on the left hand, so, um.
Thank you.
I think that that was all, but I like it. We decided to see it move forward.
Good, that's all really helpful feedback, that's great, thank you so much.
Yeah, anyone else have anything? I think, uh, yeah, between Bill and Evan and Kevin, that's, uh, pretty comprehensive, nice work. And definitely nice work, uh, Lisa and Katie for sure, though, yeah. All right, um, yeah, thank you guys so much again. And let's see, we have no department or agency reports today, so we'll move on to our commission general reports. Uh, commission member disclosures, anything, any, uh, of my fellow commissioners need to disclose about anything on the agenda today? Okay, we'll move on to general commission reports and future considerations, and I think Mary said she left the meeting, right? Yeah, okay, right, yeah, I know she was traveling in, in time constraints, so let's, uh, let's change it up a little bit, start with Mike today. You, uh, you prepared yet, Mike?
I'm prepared, don't worry. Big news, uh, the Osta roof actually was flapping in the wind. Uh, that is a major problem out there, seeing that it's a new roof. Uh, it, it, it is very windy up there, um, it is underneath a twenty year, uh. Warranty, uh, I know that they were already out in the timeline that I was, uh, gone from town over the weekend. Uh, I haven't got any updates from that, but I do know that that is not gonna fall on us. The roof is being, looking, and gonna be fixed, uh, for the company to put it on. Uh, again, uh, restating what Trish also spoke of, uh, Osta has been awarded the annual recreation grant for thirty-six thousand dollars. Uh, for the archery range, uh, there will be more costs for that, but, uh, it's, we're, it's, it's a healthy start, so. Glad to see that. Uh, plenty of them were happening at, at Osta, and we're leading it to. Um, Arch Light, uh, County Fair, uh, but lots going on out there, and. Just, uh, kudos to Angie for keeping on it, uh, I cannot speak that enough. As Osta Advisory Committee is also the fair board, or acting fair board right now. Uh, just keeping things moving along, uh, as well as possible.
We'll maybe reach out to folks or volunteers in some capacity.
Volunteers and volunteers, uh, both alike, so, yes.
Thanks, uh, Trish.
Yeah, to add to the Yorg, um, I will, actually tonight, backcountry hunters and anglers, just solidifying there, they gave us five thousand dollars for the archery range. Probably be hitting up some other organizations. I'm not done, but the bulldozer is sitting out there and ready to get going, so it's happening, which is cool. Um, I'll go really quick, I'm not gonna go over everything, just a couple of things from the planning commission meeting. Uh, we do have a new associate planner, Bryce Rogers, they, the consultants, as you know, have, uh, been hired. And they're gonna begin working on future land use plan. The housing, the housing task force just sent out a survey, if you haven't seen it. Please kind of like pass it on via social media, whatever, it's a survey to fill in those gaps of the housing burden. Here in the county, you know, the goal is to get data on vehicle dwellers, data on seasonal workers, et cetera, et cetera, and so on. Um, I went to Moab Area Watershed Partnership MOP meeting, we did not get the Nag Woman grant. I know Valerie's gonna be really upset about that. Failed to be funded, the positive thing was that basically, well, not the positive, but we found out that all of those monies were slashed. Quite deeply, so it wasn't that we did a bad job, um, just, yeah, that, those monies were slashed. The UGS gave a study on the North Spanish Valley and the Matas Reserve, basically on brine. Listen, we're finding out a lot of it, a lot of on brine, but a couple of things that kind of stood out to me is basically water in, water out. They think about a thousand acre feet of water pass through the Matas Reserve per year, basically more, so. We know out of Mill and Pat Creeks, but also out of all the springs on, you know, the east side of the valley. But that's how much, pretty much water is lost, and so that being said, you know, a concern is if we continue to develop water specifically like Skakel Springs. What does that mean for a Matas Reserve, right? Cause we know that it's just water in, water out, so if we don't have that water in. Then the Matas Reserve would begin to go into a deficit. We know that there's that brine layer. Um, underlying the preserve, it's fairly leaky, you know, it's pretty close to the surface. We know that the pressure of fresh water pushes down on that brine, so if you relieve that pressure, does that mean you have brine or salty. Saline water inundating, um, that existing freshwater, so really interesting study, it went on and on, but really cool. As far as, I went to the library board, um, they're providing hotspots to community partners, so that's kind of cool. Movie in the Park series has begun. Um, went to the Guissa meeting, and they did swear in, then Wilson and Steve Getz to the Grand. County Water Conservancy District, um, the lake numbers are extremely high. Um, and they've kept them really high all winter, the soil moisture is actually doing really good. Um, we do know, and I'm working with Tony, I met yous on this, the Milk Creek Gauge. Has been funded by the BLM, and the BLM has ceased that funding, that gauge is really important, not just not to Guissa, but also. The county and city for flood warning, so, um, I'm kind of throwing it out there to Mark Stillson and Tony right now, like. How do we fill that gap of funding? I think it was about eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars a year for that gauge. We are, we're helping to fund the gauge on Pat Creek, but it's, it's a really important gauge. But I think it's important to both, you know, city, county, but also to Guissa, so just a thought, um. I think.
Thanks, Trish, uh, Bill.
Yeah, let's see, just the slight update, Mary and I are working on the transfer station thing, so that's still ongoing, you know, solid. We also had a meeting regarding the Thompson. Definitely some movement forward there, I think. Be able to do something with their property, I also attended the motorized trial committee, very little there earlier than. Bill did mention Bill Jackson, uh, he's seen some damage on some of the B roads. He's concerned about possibly needing some more signage. Some enforcement maybe? Uh, let's see, we had the audit committee meeting, um, we're still looking for a financial advisor there. Just got some qualifications, but would be good if we could get somebody to reach out for that. And then I was on Brian's tour today with Bob Schiak and Trish. Um, we had a very good discussion, we got to a tour in trip that we called Ash First, and then we had a great discussion up on. There was a point visitor center, where we had lunch up there, and some discussion. A bit of discussion around that and some with the future.
Thank you, Evan.
Uh, I think the biggest thing that I have to report on is I had the quarterly meeting with Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Chairs. So that was, uh, um, chairs from across the state, and, uh, just a reminder, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is, uh. Uh, it kind of, is focused on justice reform, and especially on the local level, so within our county. And we've kind of identified a lot of, you know, reductions towards recidivism, uh, reintegration goals. So a lot of stuff around like probation and pre-trial sort of stuff, um, and so. Uh, like a lot of other organizations, this last legislative sections, session, it did not receive as much funding. As was hoped, and it was kind of, you know, taken from one pot and put to another pot, so we kind of lost out on some of the goals there. Um, I think mainly just for, you know, sheriffs were asked to kind of prioritize their, their needs, and. A lot of, uh, these goals didn't line up there, so feel free to nudge folks that way if you find yourself in those conversations. Um, uh. This quarterly meeting, uh, they shared a list of private probation providers, so, um, it's something that we don't necessarily have to handle. In the public sector, um, most of them were kind of up north, but I've got a list that I can share, and, uh, we also had a presentation from the children's. Center, so there's another, uh, non-government agency that helps with like infants and toddlers around court, so if there's. Kind of custody thing, so even younger than our children's justice services that we have, there's, you know. We're dealing with school age kids, imagine if they were diapers, and you gotta find a place for them to go for the night. They can't be with their folks or whatever, anyway, uh. Those meetings here meet fairly regularly for our own. those meetings here meet fairly regularly for our own county ones. The role of the chair is just kind of to get all the bodies in the room and have a gathering of the minds. And um we're creating a plan that then we can present to the state. We have a plan, but we'll continue to refine our plan to present to the state to try to get projects funded. So we can't really get the funding unless it's on the the projects list. So obviously, it's a long-term, long-going thing with my departure at the end of the year. I had briefly asked Mike if he might be interested in taking on that role. And uh before we got too formal with kind of passing the torch for future consideration, I was just kind of looking for a head nod if folks were kind of okay with a slow kind of transition there, kind of introducing them around and getting that ball. That was kind of the main thing I had.
That's all. Thanks, Kevin.
As as Bill mentioned, there was an audit committee meeting yesterday. Seems like a long time ago, I think it was just yesterday. Um but one thing that came up there, and and so this is either future consideration or maybe just getting some head nods. We were discussing priorities for the internal audit this year. And with the audit committee, that's me, Trish and Bill, thought would be a good idea. Some things I will list, and I'm just wanting to know with the rest of the commissioners, if it sounds good to you, then we'll go with that. If you'd rather have it discussed as an agenda item at some future meeting, you know, we could also do that. I don't think it's controversial, but um so three items. One was um getting getting a handle on all our restricted funds with the eye toward just making sure on an ongoing basis that we are, all our spending complies with the restrictions. So transient room tax is an obvious candidate there, B road money is another one, and and we have various others. So I don't, I'm not aware of like a comprehensive list of, you know, here are the funds, here's a section of state code that says how you can spend them. Here's our actual spending, here's why we think that complies, you know, that that would be the goal to eventually get them. Second is following up on just internal audit suggestions from previous years, make sure they've actually been implemented. A lot of this has to do with the handling of cash and making sure there's always two employees present, you know, cash is handled. And the third is look looking at how we review the external audit with an eye toward, you know, making sure that we have checks in place to make sure, you know, that errors don't go undetected in the future. So does that sound right to you, you two guys? Because that's from memory, I still haven't written that down. Hope we agree on, so um do you want to nod your heads now or do you want it to be on the agenda for next meeting where we have like a full-blown discussion?
I think that sounds more uh uncomfortable to head nod now.
Yeah, I'm happy with the simple thumbs up right now, too.
I think the commission has a good representation on that board, so. Okay. Hash it out in those subcommittees.
Good. See a thumbs up from. Okay, well, we will proceed then.
All right. Then I kind of. I had a super busy couple of weeks. During this time on the eighth, I had a HBC historical preservation committee meeting. A couple of things discussed, we were advising the bylaws to increase the committee size, we've talked about that for a little while. And then we also discussed Dewey Bridge, there's been some uh energy to to talk about that, there there's a couple of funds there. So we uh talked about furthering that discussion um to potentially end at some point, restore Dewey Bridge. That's been going on for a long time, hopefully we get momentum there. Uh I also attended the Thompson Replat meeting that Bill mentioned earlier and I'm I'm I think it's great, thanks for pushing that along, Bill. Definitely seeing some progress, seeing play at the end of the tunnel there, I know the folks in Thompson benefit from that. Uh also same day, uh TSSD meeting where we did not have a forum, uh but we did have a bit of a discussion. We uh talked about an update on the Styler Line, which is an old line that was apparently breached by Utraback when they put in the original culinary line from Thompson to Utruside back in, I don't know, I think so six or seven or something like that. But uh there's some that would like to see that restored, so we're in the TSSD discussions with Utraback to see if they might be able to get back in there and repair that line, it's kind of a line that goes west out of Thompson. I think it's a three inch line, it's a relatively big. We also, let's see, actually I attended a trail mix meeting. There's a great discussion about some new trail building potential out of Barham Loops, which if you enjoy those trails, you'll be excited about. There's just some ways to make uh trails flow a little bit better, some some one-way stuff. And uh I think total expansion wouldn't wouldn't be a tough, but definitely a few miles and I think it would enhance that that area, which is cool because it's already a mountain bike focus area. Also, there's discussion about a for all of us climbers, the theater cinema climbing area actually doesn't have an official access trail. There's been some problems with that, so there's discussion of Trail Mix getting involved there, helping to create a a better official access trail up to to that Craig. We had a discussion on adaptive equipment on non-motorized trails, free supply hand cycles and such. And uh GCAT did get the RTP grant that I think we kind of wrote a letter of support here a few months ago to help replace a lot of the outdated and just deteriorated signage, so the trail system, so that's another another win for GCAT. Also attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting last Wednesday, uh first meeting where the new director was in charge, Cassie Oliver. I think she's going to be great, uh she talked about doing a listening campaign with uh with with businesses that are members of the chamber and just kind of see uh where businesses are at with the chamber and how they can uh, you know, better serve the business community, basically, uh which is which is cool. We also talked about the Chamber Scholarship Golf Tournament is coming right up, it's on May thirty first out of the golf course early and there is still some room if you want to enter that. And also there are some full sponsorships available. And then we also talked about the training schedule that they have got grants for, the next one there is on June fifth. We went on Museum of Moab meeting same night. We had a recap of the gala that a number of us commissioners attended and it was a it was a it was a it was a great event. It wasn't super financially lucrative, but it for the for the museum, but it definitely goes a long way towards building community relationships. They got tons of positive feedback, everyone went, I think, enjoyed it immensely. And they consider it quite a success. Also talked about tonight, if we get out early at seven o'clock at Star Hall, there is a talk by kind of the last survivor that's still doing uh talks from the Japanese internment camps is going to be speaking tonight. And then he's, I think he's ninety-two years old and apparently he's a he's a very dynamic speaker. So would be cool to uh go see that if you haven't put that on your agenda already and aren't too exhausted for this. Or if anyone's out there watching, that that's happening tonight at Star Hall, so that should be, that should be pretty cool. And we also had a a great cool discussion on their next major exhibit at the at the museum coming up. It's going to be on uranium, they they're really reaching out to the community and trying to get all, you know, as much input from the kind of uranium boom era here as possible to make the best possible exhibits, the museum's doing awesome stuff. Very cool, and then the next day I attended the LEPC meeting, the Local Emergency Planning Committee meeting. And kudos to Cora for just keep pushing that forward, it's great, this one was on. Uh the presentation was by UDOT, it was on spill cleanup and mitigation on on the roads. So good information there. I also met with a gentleman named Andrew Cat, I'll butcher his name, but Cat Serikis, Greek name. He's a local Utah, he said, uh and he his um his group is very committed towards bringing rail transit to Utah at a regional level. And he wanted to meet with local leaders in in the area to discuss potential for a like a regional line between Moab and Salt Lake and also going out towards Denver and connectivity. He left some information with me, uh but a couple of things he mentioned are that with the Olympics coming to Salt Lake in in a decade or so that that there's a lot of appetite for more connectivity, there might be money coming in and it's probably a good time for those discussions to happen. There's also um federal money for for kind of train transportation available right now. So he was, he's just kind of going around the state, talking to people and pushing that. I I think it's a, I think it's pretty cool. We've also talked about a uh a potential depot at the at the Utruside, that could be one of the the things with the future committees that that's definitely been discussed and that would be a great place for a depot. And then I also participated in the bride tour today and I got a lot out of that, I think that was a that was a pretty cool endeavor, I met a lot of folks today. And uh last thing I have is a reminder that we do have a commission meeting at eight thirty tomorrow morning. And that is the presentation by the Trail to Tomorrow Committee, that they're going to present the commission with a lot of what they've done up until now from eight thirty till ten. And there's a lot of the steering committee have reserve obligations as far as that goes. But uh I hope everyone's able to to make it tomorrow if you can, and that'll be here in the chambers. And I think that they will have coffee and pastries. They said, just a reminder on that. And uh that's all I have. Yes, all right, awesome, Sky, thanks. Eight thirty pastry and coffee, uh very much appreciated. It is a standard commission, yes, it is a public, it's a noticed meeting, um we will be, uh yeah. No, it's it's not a formal right, yeah, we won't be making, we won't have any decisions, but it will be a public meeting and public are invited and encouraged to attend, it'll be streamed on YouTube as well. I I hope so, yeah, anyone quick raise a hand, any who's going to be able to come tomorrow?
I don't think so, but so that's before, yeah.
We'll see if Kevin, and I know Mary's out of town, I'm not hundred percent sure, but I could ask her. Yeah, Kevin, uh the the commission meeting tomorrow morning, eight thirty, would you be in attendance? Uh we're trying to meet tomorrow. It's the Trail to Tomorrow presentation.
Oh, yeah, sorry, tomorrow at eight thirty?
Yes.
Yeah, I can.
Eight thirty to ten, that's what it would be. Okay, great, thank you.
I mean, if there's no business, there's no quorum, we could still have the presentation. Just can't take it the action process. Yeah.
Great, okay, thanks, looks like we we'll we'll meet that, so that's good. All right, and uh that is, that's it for me, short week. Sorry, that was lengthy and I and I cut it down, but um I'll go on to our elected officials, Stephen?
Hi, I attended the CJC symposium, some exciting news from there. I talked with Tracy Tabit, that's the head of the CJC department over the entire state. She knows about the separation between Grand County and San Juan County, how they're separating off into different CJC's. She said that there's a possibility of one-time funds for the next two years to help bridge the gap based on the transition from the numbers that we had in the past, they take a five-year average in a number of cases that we have. So they'll be able to provide uh some support or additional funding beyond the normal amount. It's that's that's really good news and exciting news based on the federal funding that we're likely to lose based on lack of allocating of funds for the Congress. So that's good. The CJC symposium, they focused on child sexual abuse, unfortunately, numbers have been high. But there's also a tremendous amount of underreporting. We're talking about positions of trust individuals utilizing positions of trust to commit sexual assault against children. And they say that the numbers are as low as sometimes three or four percent. Based on that, we're going to the Sheriff's Department, members that were there are floating the idea of bringing a speaker down to talk about sexual abuse and what are the things that parents need to look for for people to engage in sexual assault. And we want to either provide the training to the deputies and then provide that training at school or to have specialists come down. The one of the fit interviewers says that there's funding available for that. And so we think that's really helpful because unfortunately, there's a lot of techniques, grooming techniques that people utilize to take advantage of kids and create closer and closer bond until at a certain point they cross and footray a line and take advantage of the child. And the training that we put out, you know, that society's put out since the kind of put a lot of obligation on child to somehow fend off their aggressors with, you know, conversations of safe touch and to report it. And it's just so hard for a child to overcome some of those things. So we want to get that training on, I think that'll be really, really helpful training for any individuals that have children or professionals in the community. So that was the most thing that I had to point out.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. Looks like James is on, right? All right, Gabe's not here, so we'll move on to our commission administrator, Mallory.
Okay, I'll be very quick. We're making good progress on on annexation with the fire department. The small group of commissioners are hoping to maybe meet this Friday and talk about some other things. The fire department staff have been talking for potential negotiation points. And then from there, we would actually put together a formal proposal and eventually have it. So you guys, as well as the fire protection district commissioners, uh make this happen. And last thing, if you all are prepared, I think at the next meeting or maybe the second meeting in June, having about the spending of the local assistance and consistency plans, it's a large amount of money. But I think having you guys determine how you want to spend that and even on a higher level of do you want to use that towards one or two large projects or do you kind of want to use it as a pot of money and slowly trickle down the needs that come up or spring up?
Is there a limit on the time that when we can spend that, Mallory, or it's just going to sit there, ready to?
There are very few limits.
Okay.
No limit on packets already.
Yeah.
Uh and very few restrictions.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds like a, yeah, worthy discussion. All right, we've uh got to our general business action items section. We've already uh gone through action item number one, so we'll move up to number two. Job description update and grade change to the Assistant Marketing Director, website management graphic design, Renee?
Sure, good, good name. I I wrote in the background, but this request is Robert Rivera retired after twenty-five years with the county. And this was a position that I was filling, we're hoping to um we've added some duties to the position to upscale it to focus more on the website development and the graphic design that's needed for the travel mainly for economic development, but for the travel council's kind of sign of that. Was not a full sentence, I'm sorry. But uh this position is all TRT funded, uh the request is to go up to the two grade levels from the ten to the twelve to align with the other roles in the department as well. The answer.
Any questions for Renee concerning the position?
Pardon my ignorance, is this uh going to be advertised or is it?
Yeah, so this um is part of the motion, we're authorized recruitment for the updated job description tomorrow.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, I mean, is it prudent that we're raising that money before we look at somebody coming in for that position? I almost wonder if we wouldn't still have Robert if he had been offered a raise. It seems like we would want to pay depending on experience when we hire somebody into that position.
Sure, sure. Um I think that I the grade we've always aligned with the position itself and adding in the additional duties captures that grade change. And then, of course, we have the county policy to allow for the steps to align some of his experience. Somebody were to come in with with quite a bit of experience in this role. I do think that we can give them the steps that would align with that experience. But also I think that the grade itself um aligns with the market data and kind of where we are at. This is a very technical position. That recruiting at the grade ten, I think I could have.
Kevin? I move to approve the updated job description and grade placement of grade twelve for for the Assistant Marketing Director, Website Management and Graphic Design. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Assistant Marketing Director hyphen Website Management. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Assistant Marketing Director hyphen Website Management and Graphic Design and Authorized Recruitment effective, uh, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Got a motion on the table. For a second. Bill? All right, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner Winfield. Any, any further discussion on this or questions? Mike, you look like you, okay.
I just, I typically like to see a bunch of these all at once rather than like picking them through one at a time, but I realize that it's, uh, going out to, uh, get hired. So the time seems prudent.
So it's my, my understanding from some other conversation with staff is that all, all the other positions in this department are at twelve or, or higher. This was a standout. There's a, one of the attachments is, uh, yeah.
Position.
All right, uh, seeing no further questions, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Renee. Uh, the next one is contribution to the Thompson Special Service Fire District for hydrology study, and I'll, I'll take this one. It's in the TSSD liaison. This stems from the discussion that we had with J R from the Chair of the TSSD a few meetings ago where he came and talked about how beneficial it would be for TSSD, especially in light of the CIB grant that they recently received. To do, like, the grant actually pays for, for physical equipment and such, but they need money to do a hydrology study to, to look for a spot, the, the best places that they might be able to drill, and then they could use some of the other money for the equipment once they've located that. They did, uh, J R did shop that around and it got a pretty reasonable quote from, from a couple of people, and it looked like the study came in at about ninety-seven hundred dollars. And then, as we discussed at that meeting too, it'd be very prudent to have a contract drawn up with the, uh, with the landowner, who I think was, uh, already, yes. Uh, so he, he talked to a few attorneys and he got the conservative estimate of fifteen hundred for that. So the ask from Thompson is eleven-two, and in that discussion, I think we talked about using some commission discretionary money or, or maybe some other pot of money to help Thompson out with those. Uh, I'd go further and say that it's been, I think it's been a long time since the commission financially helped Thompson out in that, in that, in that district in a while. Eleven thousand's not a, not a massive ask for them. And I, I do know that that would be, uh, that would go a long way towards helping Thompson. So that's my presentation.
You know, like, and, and this is might be too much, but within that hydrology study that they'll look at existing well logs from that kind of whole escarpment, like.
Yeah, I think it's comprehensive. Yeah, no, I believe, I, I believe it's a pretty comprehensive. They're gonna, they're gonna pin down, I think, three or four sites that look most promising to, to start to explore.
Yeah, the only two wells that I know of that escarpment, and I guess I'm talking about on this side of Green River, the east side. Are pretty deep and, and it's not very good water. So I think it'll be great, you know, to see this comprehensive, like, what exists. How deep are they and what kind of water they get out of them?
Mike, uh, the contribution of fifteen hundred dollars for the TSSD, the council, uh, that covers, like, the scope of.
It's, I, I believe it's the, it, yes, it's, it's to prepare the contract. So once they, once they come up with a site, if it indeed is on, and it looks like it's probably gonna be on this private property owner's land, there, there's been informal conversations with them. Bill was actually at a meeting with me where they, they talked to him during the meeting and he was very admirable. But it's definitely, if water's involved and they're drilling well, it'd be very prudent to have a contract written up. And I think this fifteen hundred would be exactly what.
No, I, I, I was just in shock. It was so low. Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah. That's great price for that service. Yeah.
Um, I move to approve the financial contribution to Thompson's Special Service District in amount of eleven thousand, two hundred dollars for a hydrology study.
All right, uh, motion to approve from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner Hadeen. Any, uh, further discussion on this before we vote? All right, uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. We are on to agenda item four, conditional use permit for outdoor recreation use, birdies and bogies, mini golf. And this one is Elisa, and it looks like Elisa is joining us on Zoom for this agenda item.
Hi, thank you. I'm gonna be um, in the meeting for the remainder, so I thought I would come back to my desk and multitask. Anyway, um, we have here before you an application for a conditional use permit for the birdies and bogies outdoor mini golf. This would be for, um, the outdoor recreation, uh, use in land use code. So I'll just briefly go over the staff report, and we do have the applicant online as well. So afterwards, I'll, um, let her describe the project or answer, answer any questions you may have. So the mini golf course is proposed on four point five four acres, uh, located along the Colorado River, parcel number eleven zero zero two seven zero 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 two. The Grand County subject property is located in the resort commercial zoning district where an outdoor recreation business, uh, use requires a conditional use permit. The mini golf course occupies half, uh, roughly half of the parcel and the other half will remain open space. Access is from Highway one ninety-one and via the adjacent parcel, uh, eleven zero zero two seven zero 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 four, which, um, is also owned by the same owner. Their shared access agreement there would be required. Um, operating hours would be, according to the project narrative, ten AM to ten PM, Monday through Saturday, during the months of April through September. The facilities are not built to be permanent so that at the end of the season, the course could be removed. Portable toilets will be installed and all food and beverages sold will be commercially prepackaged. The site improvements, uh, that have been evaluated so far or that, that we know will be included in the site plan approval include a U dot highway access permit, a floodplain development permit, um, accessible portable toilets with handwashing facilities per the Health Department standards. Um, and also Rocky Mountain Power, um, is working with them on their, um, power poles that, um, apparently had been somewhat buried due to some, um, recent fill. So let's see, conformance with the twenty thirty general plan, uh, staff found that the proposed use is consistent with the twenty thirty general plan, section seven land use, um, in that the property is identified as being within the North Corridor Recreation Future Land Use Designation, which encourages nodes of tourism oriented resort commercial development, among other things, along US one ninety-one north of Moab near the north entrance to Moab. The proposed use is in co- conformance with the twenty thirty general plan's goal for economic development to create viable diverse commercial areas in the county that provide opportunities for working, shopping and entertainment activities. And in terms of conformance with the land use code, uh, staff found that the proposed use meets the requirements for outdoor recreation pursuant to section three point two point three J. The site is naturally audibly insulated as it is located adjacent to vacant DOE property to the west and approximately two hundred and forty feet from the Fairfield Inn parking lot to the east across Courthouse Wash. I'm sorry, are we, are you, am I sharing with you the vicinity map right now? Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we were still on that. I'm gonna just shift over. Are you seeing the site plan at this point? Okay, just wanted to make sure we had that up as well. So, um, according to the project narrative, the mini golf course is themed after Moab's local natural attractions and therefore will be designed with colors found in the natural surrounding landscape. As a condition of approval, the applicant will be required to obtain additional permits for accessory uses such as food and retail service. And also as a conditional, uh, condition of approval, uh, requirement of the land use code for this use is a reclamation bond in the amount determined by the Grand County engineer. The, the conditional use permit application is in conformance also with Article nine point one point three minimum submission requirements. And in terms of the, um, nine point ten point five conditional use criteria, staff, uh, found that all the impacts can be mitigated, um, that the anticipated detrimental impacts to health welfare, welfare, safety, um, effects on environment, infrastructure impacts, those impacts have been identified and provided in the staff report with some mitigation measures. And any of those that were, um, deemed unnecessary as a condition of approval were also included in the, uh, recommended motion in the agenda summary. So that summarizes the staff report. If you have any questions for me or the applicant, um, feel free.
Yes, Mike, I'm sorry.
Well, sorry, I didn't catch the applicant. Did we get an introduction there?
Um, the, the applicant is Nancy Robinson.
Okay, hi Nancy. No worries. Uh, my only question is, I think about some of the mini golf kind of spots up on I fifteen and with like the giant Mount Rushmore or like the, I think there's one with like a giant delicate arch or something. And, uh, could you, uh, either Nancy, could you speak to some of your design visions and then Elise, could you maybe mention any things that might be in, uh, conditions that would, prevent some like over the top design standards for entrance to the community?
I'll let Nancy address that first. Go ahead, Nancy.
All right, thanks, Elisa. So, yeah, just, um, basically, like Elisa said, everything's temporary, so we, we can't have any over the top because at the end of the season, we're pulling everything up um, and leaving the land as is. Um, what we have is, uh, not only is everything kind of the colors, but everything's based on a particular attraction. Uh, for example, we have like Canyonlands and Mill Creek and, um, eighteen eighty, there's a hole for eighteen eighty. Castle Valley, and they're just, gosh, I think the the biggest, and Elisa, there's, um, Elisa has some pictures. The biggest attraction is just the the Goose Neck, and I mean, the highest it goes is maybe two, three feet. So, um, like, the obstacles are, are, they're cement based, but they're relatively small, kind of giving an aerial view of that particular attraction there. Nothing over the top, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, um, based on the pictures that we were shown, I'm trying to get those up for you now, but, um, that they, it doesn't look, it doesn't appear that the, the structures are going to be very tall. I mean, I guess you could include a condition for a height, uh, maximum height restriction. We don't have a requirement like that in the outdoor recreation standards, so it would be kind of out of the realm of, of what the land use code requires. But, uh, that would be, I guess, something you could consider, Evan.
Maybe you spoke to this, but on the site plan, there is the race car track, and so I guess I'm a little confused as to what that is.
So it's a, it's a remote control RC. Yeah, so little toy cars.
Me being down, I'm sorry. Thank you. I just needed clarification. Thank you. Everybody, I know, everybody's got them.
So I was gonna go ahead and make a motion, but maybe not read the entire thing, so. I move to adopt the resolution approving a conditional use permit for an outdoor recreational use on Grand County Parcel Number eleven twenty-seven two as illustrated on the site plan attached to the resolution as Exhibit A with the following conditions in order to mitigate reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use and, um, I'm incorporating conditions one through nine that are in the packet.
Thank you. All right, uh, motion from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner Winfield. Any further discussion or questions?
Uh, I'm looking for those conditions. Oh, one through nine. Okay, I was looking at the letters. I apologize. Does that capture the, uh, compatible with surrounding area?
It, it doesn't. I, I guess I was unsure about. We're highly regulated and imposing conditions on conditional uses, so I wasn't gonna improvise with addition ones.
And just a refresh, this is, uh, if after a year Mount Rushmore pops up, we can say, hey, this isn't what we thought we were getting out of the deal. Okay.
Right, that's number nine. We have the annual review, um, by the planning department. So, yeah. There's a safeguard there.
Great. And I would, I would also encourage the designs not to include the secret spots that locals like, so people don't say, what is this? Where do I go to see this thing?
Oh, yeah, and let us know. Give us a list, yeah.
Mill Creek, take Mill Creek off. Let's not include places that are suffering from high use and that still have, uh, future plants in the works. How about that? Like Mill Creek.
All right, um, uh, motion from Kevin, second from Bill, uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve the conditional use permit, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. All right, we are on to agenda item five, First Amendment to Star Grant Contract. This one goes to our county attorney, Stephen Starks.
On this one is the intimate Moab weddings. Uh, there's two things for us to talk about. One, a request from the applicant and then two, an extension of the contract. The easier one is the extension of the contract. If the commission is not inclined to grant what they're requesting, then they're gonna need additional times, time to be able to spend down the money. Uh, this was the only grant applicant that requested to pull back funds in order to pay taxes on the grant funds that they received. No one else in the plan, uh, did this. From my position, I don't really see it as a feasible basis. We gave them money, they were supposed to spend it on a particular thing, uh, but they did withhold five thousand, four hundred dollars as essentially prepayment for taxes. And so my position would be, if the commission wanted, they could say, yes, of course, that's within the scope of your grant. Uh, we want you to spend money on taxes. A different position, which, again, I would probably suggest that perhaps you would want them to spend the money on what the original project was. Instead of having to do taxes, I think it slightly defeats the purpose for them to save money for taxes, but the commission's opinion could be different. But ultimately, the request would be, give them more time in the, in the event that the commission says, you know, we don't want you to save money for taxes, uh, then they can spend the money down.
Yes, Scott. Please do, yeah, yeah.
Just for detail on this particular one, the scope of work was to bring on a staff member. So the taxes apply to payment. It's not just a random tax payment. So I just wanted to clarify that was, that was the scope of work was unemployment. So this is taxes on that. I just wanted to clarify that detail up. Open the discussion.
But she was an independent, she was an independent contractor.
Do you, you, you might as well stay.
Uh, I don't have that right in front of me.
That was my understanding. If she paid, paid for that additional assistance as kind of a independent contractor, so I don't know where she would have taxes.
Well, do we need to postpone this then or?
Regardless, we're gonna need to do an extension on the contract.
Okay, so are we making decision about the tax issue now or?
Well, in what we've done on the previous ones, we had Commissioner Winfield, Commissioner Hadler, we, we looked at whether expenditures were adjacent to it. So the examples that I can think of were Sea Haven, uh, sought to do an extension to the building. And they said, we're gonna do a remodel, except building. And instead, they bought the building next to it. So we kind of said, yeah, that's extension, that's taken to that. Uh, and other ones, we kind of looked adjacent to that. But in, in this one, it was the request for, for taxes and I, I didn't feel, feel that it was sufficiently connected to the.
I, I guess I was gonna say, I mean, as, as you described it, Stephen, I kind of agreed with you, you know, but, but as Sky describes it, it, it sounds reasonable if it's just some something that goes along with paying an employee, and, and I guess we don't know for sure whether it's a contract employee or an actual one. So maybe we could at the next meeting have that sorted out and then decide.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to push it back. But my, my understanding was it was for taxes, but well, if we want to pass this kind of person, I think all the information we have from them.
So the original quest was just money to add an additional employee, so.
Yeah, it was to bring on, I believe, an additional photographer to come assist with the.
Yeah, I think, uh, it was kind of a long time ago, but it
but in our, my understanding was it wasn't for employee, it was for payment to offset the fact that she was getting twenty thousand dollars. I started with it either way.
Yeah, it might be a bit of taxes. Yeah, it might be a bit of taxes.
I mean, ultimately, what we're saying is, we would love for you to continue to spend money on your mission of having it, helping you out. And that's why I'm saying, if we give her additional time, she's gonna bring in the staff member to spend up the rest of the money. How it was originally posted to me is, hey, look, you gave me an award. I'm gonna get taxed on this. I want to pay taxes with money.
Yeah, okay, so we're, we would. Uh, give an extension and not make any changes to the requirements somehow.
Yeah, we just extended the contract period, then she could come back and say, hey, look, I spent another five thousand four hundred dollars on this employee to help me out. And then, oh, it's compliant.
Okay.
The only thing that she brought up, I think that she brought her on for a temporary period of time. Uh, was the only thing, when we reviewed it, that's, that's what I recall, that she was on for a period of time, had that employee set aside.
Okay, and, and the thing that's in the packet is?
Just an extension, and then just a reminder that the applicant.
Okay, so, so we don't have to make any changes to the motion that, that's already incorporated?
No, it's giving her more time.
What's the total amount of time that we, she was asking for?
Uh, we pushed it back, I believe it was till the end of the calendar, this calendar, so an additional. Six months, right?
Yeah, eleven days.
Okay. So I, I move to approve the First Amendment to Star Grant, to the Star Grant Contract for Intimate MOLAB Wedding.
Thanks.
I, there should be weddings, plural, I think.
Right. You got a second? Evan.
All right, Evan, studying studiously.
I was looking for that calendar year twenty twenty four.
Okay, and, and again, my, all. All the, all we're doing is, is the extension.
Yeah, that sounds. Any other discussion?
They still have the ability as you get the full amount of their award.
Right.
It's just kind of bill suspenders making it.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. Thanks, Scott.
John, did you wanna do citizens to be heard?
I'm sorry, I do wanna do citizens to be heard, yeah, thanks for the reminder. Sometimes I need to have a reminder, six o'clock sneaks up and gets past me, but it is, it is, uh, so it is. Eight minutes after six, uh, it is time for our six o'clock citizens to be heard session. I would uh. Ask anyone in the chamber who is here for uh, citizens to be heard to come forward, state your name and speak.
My name is Pete Gross. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I had some personal business to take care of with our county attorney. Though I'm not in any legal trouble. But also, since I'm here, I want to say thank you for your vote on the conditional use permit for Kane Creek last session. Um, and it was a tough one. I really appreciated Commissioner Walker's rigorous analysis of the interpretation. I haven't read the general plan, so I cannot. Say it personally, but um, I know his math background. Mathematicians deal with rigor, and I feel pretty confident in what he said. Anyway, thank you again, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Pete. Um, is there anyone on Zoom who is here to, to make a comment? Okay. All right, um, thank you, we'll move on. Uh, we are on to agenda item six, reaffirming resolution number three, three, two, three, respect for our neighbors' rights and the rule of law regarding fireworks. This one is our commission administration. Or Alicia.
So this one is, uh, there really isn't any change to it. Uh, for the last few times, it's been workers in it. It's just reaffirming the same resolution, that's the respect our neighbors' resolution, fireworks. It goes with fireworks. Land use regulations, desert, landscape, making sure you're paying attention, being kind to your neighbors.
Great, and I think, I think we've uh, passed this resolution every single year that I've been on the commission and uh. Usually we pass it the meeting rate before Fourth of July, but I think uh, we had a, I think Mary actually. Uh, brought that up in her, in her reports that she'd like to have it uh, done earlier than normal this time, so here it is.
I did put in the background for anybody that's curious kind of the history of the resolution.
Awesome. All right, Mike?
Oh, this is some words. I move. I move to reaffirm, reaffirming. Resolution number three, three, two, three, respect our neighbors' rights and the rule of law regarding fireworks.
And then Bill's seconding, so uh, motion to approve from Commissioner. McCurdy and a second from Commissioner Whitfield, Mike?
Uh, just speaking to it, uh. Been a firebug my whole life, love fireworks, but uh. We catch on fire over here, so respect those neighbors, guys.
All right, um, so am I remembering correctly that like there. In the past, Mark Horowitz was urging us to pass this. I'm just wondering, and I, my understanding is maybe he's, he's moved on, so. Maybe going forward, we should call this the Horowitz Resolution or something. Yeah, go, cause it's a mouthful, yeah, I just said otherwise. Tackle that next year.
Unofficially known as the Horowitz Resolution. From here on, uh, all right, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the Horowitz Resolution, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously.
Put that in the paper.
Want to thank Alicia for doing that. She saw some, she jumps on stuff and she heard Mary say that.
Yes, put it right on. Thanks, Alicia. All right, we've come to the end of our regular agenda. We're on to our consent agenda and uh, we gotta. Hold the bills here. Um, the consent agenda consists of approval of eighteen minutes for our last meeting, May. Uh, seventh, um. Ratification of payment of bills, and those bills are in the amount. Of nine hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred fifty dollars and forty cents, uh, payroll, amount of four hundred nine thousand eighty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. For a total bills and payroll, amount of one million four hundred and one. Thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, uh. Agenda item, consent agenda item C, volunteer appointed to the Solid Waste Special Service District Board. Item D, purchase of security solution to address the emergency operations center, that's the E O C. Item E, independent contractors agreement with Bomb Town for twenty twenty-four Grand County Fair. Item F, award of bid for storage area network or SAN and server's request for proposal. Uh, item G, county fire warden agreement between Utah Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands. And Grand County, item F, consent for a single event liquor permit for Next Horizon Events LLC. Item J, letter of support for Grand County's Conservation District's annual crop school. Or I'm sorry, that was item I, item J, Grand County's twenty twenty-one building resilient infrastructure communities. Also known as the BRIC scoping grant final report. Item K, memorandum of understanding between the Utah Cyber Center and Grand County. Item I, basis species, basis of species mitigation grant award contract between the Utah Department of Agriculture and Food and Green County Knox Suites Department. Finally, uh, item M, ratifying intergovernmental purchase agreement with Morgan County Sheriff's Office for patrol vehicle for the Grand County Sheriff's Office. Lot, thirteen items. Entertainer motion. Thank you. And a second from Mike, so uh, motion to approve the consent agenda from Commissioner Whitfield, second from Commissioner McCurdy, all in favor, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. All right, that is the end of our action items. We have a number of discussions on the menu today, and the first one is. A public lands vision statement, and uh, Commissioner Walker brought this to the um. To the table, so I would uh, have him start the discussion off, if you would, Kevin.
Yeah, actually, I think the, the title of this discussion was, was supposed to be just, you know. Overview of public lands policy, because we, you know, we. Way in on better lands issue every now and then, and then the vision statement, which we approved a couple of years ago. Um, is an attachment to that. I, I guess the main thing I wanted to discuss is. You know, in, in the past, you know, because we. Federal land issues come up every now and then, and the issues are often similar, we had kind of a big discussion on vision and overall. Thing, and then we don't have to rehash those issues, or at least not rehash them quite as much when a particular comment letter comes up. Um, but it's, it's been at least a couple of years since we did that. We have a different, some different commissioners on the commission now. So I just thought it made sense to. You know, before diving into the next comment letter, which might be coming up next meeting, just, you know, to, to think about the overall vision and. And I don't know if we wanna talk content right now, or just say, hey, we wanna devote, you know, X amount of time to this in a future meeting, I. I, I don't have any. I'm not proposing any particular path forward, I just wanted to make sure we all had the opportunity to, to weigh in on this, to see if we wanna. Examine it, you know, I, I, I think these vision statements are kind of written to be sort of the things that most people would agree with, but, you know, that. Doesn't mean that everyone agrees with every little bit of it, maybe. Think should be added or subtracted. I, I mean, I, I'm fine with the way it is, you know, so I, if we just don't wanna make any changes, that's great with me, but. I think we should discuss it, because, you know, we don't wanna just be relying on things we've proved.
Would it make more sense, I'm just trying to be somewhat uh, thrifty with our time to. I mean, I obviously it was in our packet, but to send it out to everybody, let them make any, you know. It's our appropriate.
Or I guess more to, you know, just give people more time to think about it, and then we could, you know, kick the can to the next meeting, we can have a similar discussion item then. I mean, that's certainly something you could do.
Throw around some edits prior to that, and then that way, when we come back to it, it's somewhat. Solidified. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we, I mean, we shouldn't be doing the, the drafting and back and forth with each other outside, I mean. Right, yeah, there's, there's a limit to how much, so. But if, if someone wants to propose particular things, then we can discuss them at the. Next meeting. No, I, well, I, I, I'm, I'm not against waiting till next meeting, I just want. Make sure we're not all gonna meet together in secret and draft divisions. Uh, those are the, the next discussions.
Bill, you had your head up.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any problem with it. The way it stands, it's not binding me to anything, it isn't going to change my beliefs or pull me to. That I have to believe it as it's written, uh, sure. Actually, after today's event, I think the very last line is very appropriate for the natural resources development. I see the potential for some lithium coming up. Um, like I say, it, it's not like we're putting out a legal document here that somebody has to adhere to, so. Those are my thoughts on it.
No, I'm good with it the way it is, awesome.
Although. Could get it all on one page of paper, maybe.
Okay, but, but I, I guess we could also just have the, the broader discussion of, um. Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I, I, I think. You know, my, my recognition of the, of three and a half years I've been on the commission is that, you know, in the early days, there were a lot of us who were kind of new, you know, we had. You know, biggest debates about public lands and what, what kind of positions Grand County should be taking on issues about, you know, balance of. Motorized, non-motorized, extraction versus preservation, all those things. And then after a while, we kind of realized, we were, and, and future debates were shorter, because, you know, we just. You know, ended up on the same place on, on similar issues. But I, I do think that needs to be recalibrated every now and then as the composition of the commission changes, so. Um, we, I mean, maybe we just do it in the context of next, next time we have a concrete comment letter, which. Be coming up soon, I think for the Bears, you're just planning on it. Uh, there's also a, the Doris Triangle, you know, there's a, there's a couple of ones coming up. So I, I'm, I'm just trying to ensure that, I, I personally don't feel the need for a change of direction, but I just wanna make sure the process is. Is open and people have a chance to participate. And that, that can happen in various different ways, so it doesn't have to happen like right now.
Read the second, read, let me scroll all the way to the bottom, but, no, actually, uh. It's pretty good as is, I, I don't think, see anything that stands out. Uh, that I wouldn't want for mine of my own, so.
Yeah, I, I think that the uh. The potential future debates, you know, kind of stem from splitting hairs, you know. What does it mean to have fair allocations? What does it mean to have compatibility? You know, some of those kind of words are what's. So I think that, um. You know, a statement like public lands are the cornerstone of Grand County's economy and quality of life, it's like, who's gonna argue with that, you know, so I think most of these are. Really straightforward and, and I see them as uh, hitting the mark. So I'm, I'm okay with keeping it as it is. Uh, yeah, Bill?
Yep, at the end of the day, the votes kind of determine. The direction that the county votes this document is, so. Plenty of number of many directions here, so really, it's just gonna be a vote on whatever it is deciding on.
Where have we, so where, where is this posted? This on our website, under the public lands button, or trying to. I remember working on this, I think, I, I.
But I, I. I've never noticed it on our website.
Yeah, I haven't seen it. Very often since uh, since we did, did work on it.
Yeah, occasionally we quote it in comment letters.
Right, yeah, I choose. Might be nice to, to have it accessible, I guess.
Okay, you know, I can. Work, I. I can take that off.
Yeah. Um, it, it was part of the general plan, wasn't it? We had a bunch of different vision statements in there.
Okay, yeah, well, I think it predates.
It predated the general plan for sure, because I remember working on it pretty soon after we were elected, I think the date on it's May of twenty one. We were, I, I remember starting to work on the general plan that summer, once we hired, uh, Gump there. So it definitely predates, but he probably incorporated it into the.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't have anything more to say. Okay. Okay, so are we, we're good, do, do we wanna bring this back at the next meeting? Okay, great. Good. Thanks. It's nice to, to put eyes on that again. Did you have a comment, Stephen? Okay, cool, just getting ready for the next one. All right, uh, thanks, Kevin. Um, we'll move on to the next discussion item, changes to the Open to Public Meetings Act, and it's O P M A, pursuant to HB thirty-six. And I'll hand it over to Stephen, our county attorney.
So recently, they made additional changes under section fifty-two dash four dash one oh three, and that entire section. What they've done is they've cleaned up and, and made back, or pulled back some of the restrictions on a commission communicating electronically. So for the commission's excitement, uh, you can now engage in. Uh, electronic mail, also known as email, instant messaging, electronic chat, text messaging. About particular topics and have more forum, however, there are certain capouts. So number one, the big prohibition uh, is located in fifty-two dash four dash two oh eight, which is predetermining an outcome. So what that means, and this is going to be slightly annoying at times, is that the commission cannot. While constituting a forum of public body act together outside a meeting in a concerted and deliberate way. To predetermine an action to be taken by the public body at a meeting on a relevant matter. What does that mean, mean in plain English? If we send out an email now, so if the commission is all in the same email. Somebody wants to inform the commission about a particular topic. You could do that, get that information, however, what you can't start to do is say, we should all vote in a particular way. Now. We've, we've done some of, sometimes we've provided information, but theoretically, one could create a part of a discussion. But again, you have to be very, very careful on what the language has done, and it's like anything else, one, one. Bad egg can ruin fun for everyone. And so as much as we can, it, it's eased up some of the communication and allowing the, the body to be on the same email chain. I don't know if all of you are on the same text message chain, uh, instant message chain, et cetera, but. But that is theoretically an option, so long as certain things are not getting triggered. And the reason why is, originally, this was designed to kind of alleviate some of the problems you have in, in counties that have three commissioners. Where two people sending an email together triggers a meeting, because of the forum issue. Um, I, I think it can be helpful, for example, where you have a letter or an item that you're trying to draft and discuss and say. I I think it can be helpful, for example, where you have a letter or an item that you're trying to draft and discuss and say theoretically. I could support this position, or this sounds interesting to me. I think you could do some of those things. But probably what you can't do is you can't say, I'm voting this way on this item. But I think it it's going to be kind of a gray area on some of it where where you go crossing the line to. Having a healthy discussion about a particular topic into the world of predetermined the outcome of of a matter. It's going to kind of be a case by case issue, uh, but it's now it's a more effective tool to utilize those means. We're now kind of allowing the commission to be involved on email chains where I can throw everybody on the same email chain and inform you guys about things. Instead of breaking you guys up into smaller chunks. Uh, another tool that I've utilized is blind carbon copying the commission. Uh, but now we don't have to worry about somebody hitting reply all, so long as they're meeting the requirements of the new new postcode or the new. New law and and the new statute. So those are some of the things that I wanted to point out. It does ease up some of the restrictions, but you know, with great power comes great responsibility and we must uh make sure that we're not reaching that.
Um, yeah, so to tell me if if you a- agree or disagree with, you know, the following examples, so. You know, if there's an email discussion involving four more commissioners and it's about something that's on an agenda item, you know, then we'd have to be very careful because. It's just one small step to discussing and to say, hey, you know, this is how I'm going to, you know. On the other hand, if if it's an an issue that, you know, maybe this zoning in general or, you know, some something that definitely is county business. But is isn't, you know, there's nothing on the agenda at the moment, there's nothing that could be voted on. We we are allowed to have substantive discussions over email about county issues with more than four commissioners, so.
That's that's my my take of it as well. You can have a good chunk of uh information that's being exchanged between the commissioners where. Or you had to be very cautious on having a forum. So you could have four commissioners on, let's say you had. Four commissioners are really excited about the uh. Noxious weed department, I'll use one that's shouldn't be very controversial. Imagine you really wanted an update and she could throw four commissioners on it and say, hey, here's the noxious weed update. There you go, there's the information. And perhaps one of you looks at it goes, you know what, if uh there was a tumbleweed initiative. I would be interested in a tumbleweed initiative, but you couldn't say, thanks for the update. I hate tumbleweeds also. If in the future. This issue comes before me, I guarantee that I will vote this way on tumbleweeds. So, but I think you could be informed of those things, you could have a discussion, but again, it's that predetermining. The outcome is going to be a tricky thing, and what's that look like? I I mean, I I don't know, but I would say the closer we get towards the commission item, it being on the agenda. The scrutiny is going to continue to increase, and then I remind everybody. Your government emails are subject to uh grandma requests and uh. I would, I would pray, uh, I I'm not religious, but I would really encourage the commissioners to not create. You know, instant messaging on particular topics, you could, but again, the more, the more. Control that we have over the conversation better, uh, but this, this should be helpful and a good tool to open things up to have discussions where. Before it had to be spliced out, but yeah, I think you can have good competition, especially the further we are or. Further the commission is from making a decision on a particular topic, I think you're going to have more protection covered. Now, what what I probably wouldn't recommend as much is there are certain topics that I would just say. Don't go there, any of the, you know, planning decisions like CUPs, uh, like discussing. merits of the CUPs, you don't want to do that, but generally, for example, if you wanted to discuss whether the county should even have CUPs. I think you could have a conversation about some of those important topics uh that we haven't kind of dropped down.
So so I mean, another, I think, I think very common example is just discussing what's going to appear on the agenda.
Yeah, that'd be.
There's this issue is affecting the county, hey, maybe we need an agenda item or a resolution that says blah. I would think those are okay, I mean, because, you know, we could all agree, we want this resolution, we get to meeting, we said, wow, yeah, second thought, this sucks, you know, we're not going to go for it.
That'd be a wonderful way of usage of it, because then just having idea or just having items on the agenda doesn't guarantee a particular hour. They they would have to be, again, they'd have to be cautious of saying. I want the tumbleweed initiative on the agenda, not I want the tumbleweed on the initiative or on the agenda because I'm going to vote for it.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of some of the problems that we get, and again. Right now, it's a brand new legislation, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of uproar about it, but the second that there starts to become problems, not saying that there's going to be. Uh, but they they'll go back and try to fix it, uh, that's what the legislature seems to try to do is fix things a lot of times.
So I I noticed there was some, um, you know, so I I think the parts that you just emphasized that in my reading, those seem like the the most important things as well. On the other hand, I I got emailed some slides from UAC presentation where they were. Saying that now everyone has to define what it means to convene a meeting or something, since that's no longer defined. Which seems a little odd to me. I I notice you didn't emphasize that either.
Yeah, I, so the reason why, we've had a couple, we've had a couple cases that have come down where the definition of meeting is. Isn't, it isn't disagreement. The the case that I go to is the uh Sam Mark Commission. Uh, quite a few years back, had some private meetings with federal officials regarding the Bears Ears or the Federal Monument. Uh, it was back during the Trump administration and and I believe there was a nonprofit that sued them. There was kind of some. Towering about uh or handwriting about what the definition of a meeting is and when, when a. Body starts to have power, control of the of the item. And that was the stance that Sam Mark County took at the time and saying, well, we don't have the control of the bears here, so we should be able to be in the Trump administration. And the Utah Supreme Court came down and said, no, if you're dealing with having meetings regarding a topic that's connected to. Or by your community or your public, then it could be considered. So from that, well, they said that that was the baseline, because it was originally, it was a grandma request. That was, that was made about those documents, uh, and it was, I believe it was sue against uh Sam Mark County. Uh, it was a few years back, but it made it all the way up, but they didn't make, uh, they didn't determine what the definition of a meeting was, so. That that could be something that the commission may want to endeavor to define. Uh, but I I think for the most part, we're not triggering. Meetings unless we're in in the new updated information that says. They they just have that same language with the authority to convene the public body and follow the process provided by law. For convening a public body, a specific body, and for the express purpose of acting as a body to receive public comment, deliver it about a matter and take. Action on the matter. That's what they have in uh subsection five uh. Uh, fifty two dash four dash.
That that sounds like a pretty high bar for what councils meeting.
So I I don't know that we want to restrict it down further. We can almost make laws that are more restrictive. Uh, but we can't make them less restrictive depending on what the statute is. That's, that's the update, so I, I I think that can be exceptionally helpful and useful for the commission, commission admin to communicate with the commission about. Particular topics, uh, provide updates. That's what I wanted to share with you and I I think Commissioner Walker for bringing up this topic.
Great, thanks, Stephen. Yeah, it's definitely helpful. Interesting, um, all right, we're on to our third discussion item, land use code revisions, discussion and feedback for planning staff and Lisa. Is uh back for this one. Are you on Zoom, Alisa?
Yes, I am, thank you. Okay, I'm, I will share my screen and just briefly um. Introduce this discussion item, so. The land use code list uh that I included in your packet, it encompasses a sort of laundry list of um. Updates that the planning department has been tracking over the past couple of years. Um, most of the revisions are are minor updates that will clear up problem areas that we've had, um, which cause. You know, issues with interpretation and applying the code consistently. The changes would help also to fill in some of the um apparent gaps that we've identified where the code is silent when it should address something specific. And then, of course, we have some part, um, important revisions that bring the land use code into compliance with state statute that, um, those are somewhat. Out uh overdue, actually, so those need to get done immediately. Um, while the majority of the revisions are somewhat innocuous and will make planning staff's job a whole lot easier when applying the code. There are some changes proposed in this list that could have slightly more significant impacts in terms of uses allowed in various zones. Those would include taking a careful look at the number of CUPs that uh are currently within the US, the use table. Such as the CUP for non A A T V outfit guide facility in rural residential zoning. And another potentially impactful change proposed would be to reduce the resident residential density allowed in highway commercial. From eighteen dwelling units to five, since we have other areas designated in the valley for ho- our higher density, more affordable housing options. Once the uh future land use plan comes online. Um, these types of proposed changes will take more more care in terms of consensus building and ensuring that we do not pose. Uh, or just, yeah, that we don't pose challenges in terms of um potential takings. Obviously, we'll follow our standard legal review process um with all of these changes and ensure that we have the county attorney's approval before bringing. Any draft redline versions of the code amendments forward. And I realize this is a pretty large list of updates and can be kind of overwhelming to look at all at once in a spreadsheet like this. Um, but this was kind of our our best way to consolidate the number of spreadsheets that we have um over the years. Um, have accumulated of tracking these updates. Um, we wanted to share this with you and the public at this point, just for transparency sake, as we start to draft the actual redline versions of the code. And we anticipate um having a workshop, I think, as a next step. To really drill down on some of the specific changes and those that could potentially have impacts to future development as well. So that's, that's it. I really don't have a lot that I wanted to to get into right now, um, unless you want to ask. Of course, you could have, you know, some clarification questions or. Um, it totally up to you if you want to discuss some of these specifically or get a better understanding of them.
So so one question is, um, you know, we started one of those, you know, section five oh eight, I think I've got the number right, you know, six month. Windows recently, is this a list of everything we're planning to do before that period runs out, or are there other separate discussions that?
This would be, uh, this would definitely be a list of that we would want to get done before that period. I think this would be. Uh, an immediate priority, this list right here, um, but.
Something that's not on the list, is that, do I need to bring to your attention?
Yes, I think that would be, yes, I think there are some things on here that we've discussed, or I'm sorry. I know that there are some items on that are not in this list that I think we've discussed in the past that I wasn't sure. Um, which way we were going with, so yes, I think at this point we would um take any. You know, recommendations from the commission, ideas, things that aren't included on here, we'd love to know. What you would like to see.
Have any information regarding changes to the CUPs or if the commission wants to have CUPs going?
I couldn't, I couldn't quite hear you, Stephen. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were.
I I said whether whether we had uh additional restrictions, additions or changes to CUPs and whether. Whether we want to eliminate them entirely or.
So so correct me if I'm wrong, at least, I I think there's several specific proposals for getting rid of conditional uses in this list. But it doesn't cover all the.
It doesn't, that's true.
And I do kind of wonder, you know, kind of following up on what Stephen said, do we? I I I personally think that we should. You know, if if possible, get rid of all the conditional uses, you know, either by turning them into permitted uses or removing them or creating an overlay zone. There there might be a few left, but I I think. You know, I I wouldn't just get the high profile ones, I would try to go after all of them. This is rather.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is definitely not an exhaustive list, and I think that that is something we could discuss at maybe at the workshop is. Just looking at the actual use table as a whole and really going through and. And deciding whether or not to keep any conditional use permits. I think there would be a reason to keep um. Some of those for some of the, in the industrial zones or industrial uses.
And I'd love to look at this and get Bart's input on some of it about uh removing. And modifying our standards of review and some of the other items, but. Uh, I I would just encourage the commission to consider some of the things that you guys have been talking about wanting. Uh, and and some of the Harper that you guys have had over the past. Dealing with whatever it is and, you know, I'll call out a couple of them, just, you know, because they're there, like the question of. When we have the individual devariance and requests and whether we want the commission to be hearing certain things, if we want to hear an officer to hear them. I mean, if you guys bring up questions on certain things, I can tell you where a hearing officer is going to give less discretion or more discretion. But if there are things that the commission finds that we really want to dig our hands in and deal with these things hands on, that's perfectly fine. Uh, but it's easier to make some of those changes, and if if we want, we could set a time with myself and Bart. And kind of go through some of the big decisions where you guys were listed as the decision makers and you guys could say, well. We'd love to do that, but we'd hate to do that, and and again, you have a lot of CUPs that would be another area where you guys could have. Input on saying, yeah, we like doing the CUPs, we like doing variances, so I just kind of want to start. Putting out the feelers for all the excitement and fun that you guys want to take on, so I. I'd really encourage you to go to workshop, have a good time, dig into it as much as you can, and then Bart and I would love to set up a time and kind of point out some of the things. Since it's like blame it on late, you set other goals ahead of time.
That sounds like a good process for us, do a workshop first and then and then.
Yeah, Stephen. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, is if that was Trish talking, I just wanted, that was something I wanted to ask actually is. How, what would be the best way to go about getting the commission's um specific. Ideas for land use code updates? Do you think that just having a a workshop? Maybe outside of a regular meeting or just prior to a regular meeting like we kind of have done in in the past or what would be?
I I would say honestly, going through this stuff in a meeting is really hard. I I mean, I I wish that a commission, that we could have commissioners almost take it on in themselves and do a study group. It it's just so hard on some of these slides, because some of the stuff may may interest some commissioners, the other commissioners may say this is, I don't want to go through this. I I don't know how else to give them that input and say, study this, tell me what you like. Because some of the, and then and then come back to the to the workshop. Otherwise, we sit through and we could do, you guys could spend. Ten, twenty hours on this, on all the different sections, get really get in the weeds, but if you guys start identifying where are the. Areas that individual commissioners had concerns at. For Bart and I, we can spend time on those particular things, and I think maybe from a policy standpoint with uh. Lisa, that's that's something that you guys could say, hey, this is important to us, we want to know more about this, and then we can kind of merge those worlds, so maybe. Self-study for the commissioners and then they set up times with Alisa to go through it, and then Alisa and I can talk and then I. Twist Bart's arm to come hang out with us, and we can kind of help plan how we can legally fix this to make it. What the commission wants to say, the commission wants to say.
Bill, you had your.
So isn't this really? Back to my previous statement, the vote's going to make this decision. This is clearly a knee-jerk reaction. To several CUPs that didn't go the way certain commissioners wanted it to. So here we're going to list them and we're going to decide, let's get rid of this CUP. We don't want one in my neighborhood anymore. Let's get rid of this one. I don't want it out on the highway anymore. I mean, this is. Uh, to your point, Stephen, this is really just a vote, this is a political issue. I would like to see a list of one through twenty five and we discuss them. And that's the way it's going to be decided, and then what's to happen if the commission changes? And I decide, well, let's put ten CUPs on that street out there because. Somebody had a knee-jerk reaction and said, we don't want any of them in the previous commission. I I think this is clearly a political.
I, um, we've been talking about removing conditional uses on the use table for at least four years. I mean, it it dates, you know, there was a Utah Supreme Court case that kind of changed the nature of conditional uses, and I know. Even back when I was on the planning commission, we went through an exercise of looking at all the Cs and see if we can get it right, because it was recognized even back then. You know, years before recent events, that, you know, conditional uses or have become awkward. And in Utah code, and maybe it's better to have things permitted with standards or not allowed at all. That makes more sense. That that's been an ongoing discussion. I think, you know, we have removed some for Utah, so I I don't think that this is. I mean, I, if we get a controversial CUP and it doesn't feel like we're, you know, making decisions the best way we can, that reminds us. Of this thing that's been on the two two list for quite a long time, so I, I don't think this is a neat, it's very, you know, it's kind of the opposite because we've been. Discussing it for years.
Yeah, I think I would also just say that from our perspective, from planning staff. The CUPs, the number of them, how many there are, has been a a thorn in our side for a while. We've had. That um change to to actually look at those and reduce them, that's been on our list for for a number of years. And. And mostly due to the fact that we realize, you you know. It almost looked like the CUPs were were put in place in a way to kind of. Have this discretionary um decision around the use in that zone. And there was a kind of a. Unsure, like, should we allow this or not? We may, we might want to decide not to, but really conditional use permits. Mostly, you know, as we've learned, are are to be approved with conditions and are very hard to deny. And so they really shouldn't be used in in a broad way. They should be very limited. Um, to address really, uh, you know, intensive uses like industrial type uses or mining. For example, and so that's from our perspective, it has actually been something we've been looking at, wanting to change. And I think the recent. CUPs that we that have brought this to light have kind of maybe lit a fire a little bit, but. That that's.
Steve, Stephen had said a second ago, I'll get to you, Trish.
And and just through all of the training that we've had, CUPs have changed. I mean, originally, the statutory language wasn't the way in which it is. And a lot of the things that we're going to do in the land use code are, it it's going to be dictated by. Majority and it's going to be dictated by the changes that they want to see. I know Elise has been asking for the funding to be able to do. Rehauls and the changes to the code that we want to do. Um, so from, you know, my position is clause I staff, I think it's important to. Find the changes that the commission would like. And then understand the legal ramifications for some of those changes, for example, like variances. The code is really run through variances. Uh, I don't know if the commission's going to say, yeah, we want to deal with variances, knowing that it's going to, there's very, very high bar we might get overturned on. But also, I think it would be helpful. Yeah, selfishly, I'm going to try to encourage the commission to really consider um. Having a hearing officer or an expert in certain cases and maybe take some of these decisions because. The more development that we get in this community, or attorneys that are going to come in, the more more. I don't want to say that the current developers are not professional, they are, but even more professional developers where. It's going to change how we handle some of the applications and that change over time is really going to push. And so I'd rather have a conversation. Of the terribles that are to come and have a frank conversation with the commission instead of painfully learning through. Some of the applications that are going to be coming now. And if we sit down and have that discussion, yeah, it may, it might feel. Political in some aspects, but also it's kind of a, it's addressing what the commission wants. What the law is, what the policy wants to be, just kind of going and and kind of dealing with all of those things. And yeah, definitely there's going to be political disagreements. Uh, but I but I do see a need and I do see a good reason as to why we should, we should kind of clean some of these things off. So and I and I know that's. I I there's good parts of the community that would not be happy with that. So that's that's where my advantage point is. I don't have a dog in the fight, Elise doesn't have a dog in the fight, but I know with her staff and with my office on some of these things. Cleaning this up is really necessary and important to be able to do our job correctly.
A comment that Mary Hopine made, and it was just kind of a a side comment, but it really hit home with me, but she's like. She's really odd where CUPs have gone. She said back in the day, it was like her random gravel pit, right? It was going to come and go. And so I think it has. Morphed and it's being used in a manner that wasn't its original intent. So. Yeah, I think it's something to adopt.
Mike. I I cannot emphasize, I am not a land use uh code expert in any sense. Or we take the advice uh for the council. Other than it, the sooner the better, that being said, uh, in my mind. Uh, uh, as attending the workshops and. In invitation to. Have more speak on. Sooner or later.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, I'd still like to see a complete list and we go through them one by one. I don't think any of these should be done without the commission having a chance to look at all of them. And I'm not a hundred percent in agreement that Alicia doesn't have a dog in the fight. Because she just made the statement that it would make her job a lot easier. Well, that's not the reason to take, change the land use. Reason to change the land use code is there's an agreement. That it needs to be done. And if it is a certain way, it's being done a certain way, that's because a political body. Put it in place. And so then a political body needs to take it out of place. I don't. I don't think it should be done to make somebody's job easier. Do I agree that it will? Yes, I do. Think it'll make a lot of people's job easier and I definitely like. Finding an authority so that it, we don't have these huge discussions and these battles here like we have had. Over CUP. I I think that they're. Oh, we don't even know what we want to call them, but I can agree that there's a better way to handle some of this.
Haven't come to me.
Um, yeah, I would, yeah, maybe I misunderstood what you said earlier, Bill, because I I do agree that, yeah, we should, we should certainly look at, we shouldn't just say, okay, eliminate all those. Cs in the use table and let's not even think about what they are individually. You know, we should have time to study that. Each of us be comfortable with what's being left there and what's being, so. If I, if it seemed like I or someone else was suggesting otherwise, I I think that's just. Miscommunication. Um, I I did have a few um. Other comments on this, you know, one is um, how how much longer are you around Elisa?
Uh, to the end of June.
The June, okay, so. And then is is someone going to be taking, is the person taking this over someone we haven't hired yet, or is there someone in your office who's conversant with all this stuff? Can have.
That will be Bryce, um, the new associate planner. She'll be um well up to speed on all of these updates and. Uh, all my staff actually have been involved in the, or I should say, the planning staff has been involved in um. Putting things on this list, so they they're all well aware of a lot of these. Most of them are are coming from them anyway. Um, so, but in terms of leading the charge, um, inter- internally, well, until we get somebody to replace me, I think that would be most definitely Bryce.
Okay, um, next, next issue, and if I start talking too long. I'm happy to take a break, continue, but uh. I it seems to me that we've got. I I just wonder if we should divide this into smaller lists or categorize the lists. I can think of three categories. One are things that we really want to happen before the six month window closes. And so that's in particular, you know, changes to the use table, changes in in the base zones. You know, there, I I think there's a very negative consequence for having it take longer than that. Um, so the, I just want to make sure those happen before that deadline.
Hmm.
Uh, another is, and then for the ones that aren't related, that, you know, there are parts of land use code, like the part Stephen was talking about. Regarding repeals and standard of review that aren't implicated in that six month window. I think for those, we should divide them between things that seem kind of urgent, like, you know. If we don't do this, then we might regret it a month from now. Versus things that are good to do, but, you know, they they are not quite as urgent. That's the first two categories. So I I think we have. Things related to the six month window, other changes that are important to get done as quickly as possible, and then changes that could wait a little bit longer. Um, and I, I, you know, it's just a, you know, it's a big job going through all this stuff, though it looks like you've already done a lot of work. I just want to make sure that the things that have to happen within the six month window do happen.
Sure, yeah, definitely understood.
Okay, um. So now a few sort of random small comments on, um, I think it's four point six. Let's hear, this is about having assured housing for RV parks. And it seemed like you were suggesting that we should do that. But my recollection is when we first connected the Assured Housing Ordinance. We only did it for use types where we had an economic justification. And there was a study and and somehow RV parks didn't make the grade. They weren't profitable enough for us to force, you know, do this exaction on them. Whereas hotels were profitable enough for that.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, and so I I'm I'm just pointing out, and maybe you already know this, but I don't think we can just willy-nilly say, okay, RV parks too. I I think we need to back it up. Some kind of study and and, yeah, I I think conditions have changed versus six or seven years ago. But I I don't think. I I think there has to be some kind of economic rationale when we're going to do something like Assured Housing Poly, which is an exaction.
Yeah, and I think this was coming up um because of some of the recent OAO RV campgrounds that were. Like the most recent one that was approved was a much more like high-end glamping su- operation that, you know. Acts more like a hotel. It kind of acts and walks like a hotel and so could be considered for this, but. I think you're right, like, it's it's, it wouldn't be doable or feasible for your regular RV campground. Um, but they could pos- potentially um be willing to um uh. In have some employee housing, so that would be something to consider as part of this.
Yeah, but but again, my worry is if we if we just impose it and someone says, well.
Yeah.
Your, your, the study that you're relying on doesn't include my type of overnight accommodation, but.
Right, yeah.
We ground.
There's some definite nuance that needs to be hashed out with this for sure.
Okay, I I another small comment, you know, you mentioned um. In in commercial, uh, and I think the highway commercial zone dropping the density down to five, um. But I I also just wonder. I mean, you know, we've, we've been here every year, we hear a little bit more about the not, we don't just have a residential real estate crisis, we also have a commercial real estate. Crisis and part of that is competition for various things and it maybe, I I don't know that right along Highway 91 is the best place. To have residences, you know, may- maybe it should, it just shouldn't be a large use period. Or and then, and then if we think there might be rare exceptions, we could create an overlay zone that would allow it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
That, I just wanted to throw that out there to be considered, um. One, one thing that I think is falls in my second category of things that need to happen as soon as possible, but. Aren't part of the six month window is is nine, ten, five E. It's one of those conditional use criteria. I think, you know, the Craig Call commented that that, uh, these aren't the words he used, but I think it's a threshold requirement. And I think. And I think Bart agrees, it should be pulled out. Um, not in that list, it's just some requirement that we don't consider conditional uses unless it's satisfied, you know, compatible with the general plan, et cetera. Um, so that that's a really small, easy change, but I think it is a priority. Um, and then I'll I'll close with with a bigger one. Um, I did some Googling this afternoon, looking at counties similar to us, like. Things in Western Colorado or Summit County, I think I looked at Wasatch County. And what's their lowest density zone for like, you know, the most remote part of, most remote parts of the county? And the 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 highest density I saw for the lowest density zone was like. Twenty acre lots, you know, one house every twenty acres. In Grand County, we're at five. I I think we should seriously consider changing, ranging grazing can be one house per twenty acres. You know, the way we've got it now. You know, creating a Newcastle Valley, which has five acre lot sizes, is used by right and all the land in the county, that just doesn't make sense to me. So I'm. I guess I'm asking for that to be, you know, an an option that we can consider within this six month window.
Yeah, that that is actually something we have included in the draft future land use plan. Um, the the. Direction was, or the recommendation within the the draft chapter is to uh. Change the most of the areas for ranging grazing and the outlying areas to minimum twenty acres. Um, that would definitely be more in line with um, you know, more counties similar to ours for sure. Um, but yeah, so if that's something that we want to. Um, move up to this stage instead of waiting until a future land use plan is adopted, then we can, we can consider that.
Yeah, I like, I I think so. I I think it would make, you know, we we're kicking ourselves for. You know, being asleep at the hill when King Creek came along and I I just don't want to make that same mistake again, so. I I, yeah, I'm I'm done with my long, that's, it's okay. Thanks, Kevin. Evan, did you?
Uh, I wasn't going to kind of go through line by line tonight, but now that Kevin mentioned the eighteen dwellings in the. Highway commercial, I'm I'm on the opposite end of the spectrum. I think that, you know, seeing Western Rivers bunkhouse out there, I think that. Uh, you know, some, some mixed use with residential and commercial, you know, they could, they. Had to move their boathouse out of uh an urban area and I think it's nice that they're able to provide some housing there. And I could uh picture something similarly where there was. A market or a corner store with housing above it. So I think that there's some opportunity for mis- mixed use. Whether that's done through an overlay or whether we tweak the existing zoning. Um, I assume that we're going to kind of also look at some of just like the names of the zones and and what's happening there. I think that. There's been a lot of interest in creating like transitional zones so that we don't have just highway commercial and um. You know, and kind of tapering into the neighborhoods where it's it's not just um. Highest use budding up against uh. Low use residential. And so uh I look forward to seeing some suggestions and options for uh other zones and. Layers and not just tweaking what's already in existence.
For sure, and and those are being addressed through the future land use plan. Um, yeah. Right now, we are working with the consultants um to come up with. To really fine tune what those new zones will look like and how, where to apply them and what kind of uses should be allowed and really break up the. Land uses within those commercial zones and those transitional zones so that they're a little more nuanced and kind of creating. You know, places with character and um different opportunities in terms of pedestrian friendly uh areas and then also just, you know, our traditional auto. Auto kind of oriented where where we ride off the highway. Um, and really looking at that in terms too, uh, in terms of the frontage road. Um, alignment, which um, you know, is is kind of looming in the future, which um could really make some changes to the land uses along there too. So those are, those definitely are being discussed um. And being addressed with the future land use plan, but I think there could be some opportunities with this land use code amendment. Phase that we're in now to uh bring some of those up to more, you know, to implement them ahead of that. So we could see how that would work out.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just want, first question for me is how how. We involve the planning commission. Um, we do joint workshop with them. I think we could definitely should utilize them for.
Yes, I think possibly a joint workshop um would be great and maybe even doing that. On a planning commission night so that, because a lot of times our agendas are much lighter than you guys. So we could maybe invite the commission for a planning commission night and then kind of make that the the focus of the the meeting.
Stephen. Just not trying to put more on Elise's plate, but I think if if in the event that this isn't substantially completed by the time Elisa. Leaves, then we're going to lose a lot of help support and work. So I don't know if we want to start putting some benchmarks or some proposed deadlines to kind of help keep this going. Not, I'm not trying to pick scabs, but the the general plan is an example of, we have kind of transition or turnover of things that. Could have had more information in it. So I think if that's something that's possible to get in a really good, clean place before Elise leaves. Or maybe try to work and only have, we've kind of have, Commissioner Walker's mentioned. Setting up priorities and fixing category number one, category number two, and maybe not starting or going half into one of those sections. I think that'd be really advisable because. I I'm really excited that Bryce is here, but she doesn't have the amount of experience that Elise has in the community. So just noting if we want to be efficient and effective, then perhaps uh this would be a priority. Whatever the commission would like to do, that's not my role, I'm just trying to encourage.
Thank you, yeah. All right, anything else before we end the discussion? Well, I I mean, do we have a plan for the next meeting or workshop? I mean, that, you know, Stephen just. Kind of made a suggestion, Elisa suggested a planning commission night to, or like we can. Over email over the next few days, figure out, like, set a date. Or when Elisa's still here, and we can meet with the planning commission. Is that a good next step?
Yeah, I I just think something needs to start because what's going to happen is, if we don't do anything, if we don't set some intentions down, we're going to show up at the next meeting and say. And really, Elise's got. Three meet, three commission meetings left, maybe four. And then the closer to the end they get, the more packed they're going to be for her and she has to get everything else.
Okay, I mean, can can Elise, could Elise take the initiative for setting up the next meeting? It's. Yeah, choosing a day.
Yeah, and then a planning commission meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at our calendar. The next planning commission meeting is is quite packed um uh with a couple of public hearings. On the twenty eighth, so that would be a little too soon. And and like I said, it's got stuff going on. So. I would suggest June tenth as the, maybe the earliest that we could have our um. Our joint workshop with the planning commission.
Eleven, don't they meet on Tuesdays? It's the eleventh.
Would you rather it on a Tuesday?
No, no, sorry. I I thought the planning commission was on Tuesdays.
Oh, it's Monday.
How long it's been since I've been?
It's just, um, Memorial Day is on the twenty-seventh, so the last, the, this very next commission or planning commission meeting, we had to move to the Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. But they are normally Mondays.
Then maybe in the interim, before we get to that point, the commissioners start picking out topics that they want Bart, myself look at. I'm, I'm volunteering for this. He's around, he'll help out. Uh, so if you guys start identifying sections and areas, you guys want a lot of information in the, the fourth barrier, I'm fine taking additional time to look at, even though we're short-staffed. Thank you for that. Does that sound, what's that, what'd you say, Elisa, June eleventh? Is that?
June tenth, June tenth.
I'm sorry. So is that a?
That's a Monday.
Or is that timely enough for everybody? Is that, is it time to do a little bit of homework and then?
Yeah, or I guess we could just use a brand new date. And it's, since it's a workshop, we don't need like a hundred percent attendance.
I think they would be, um, happy to do that. I, I know that, um, we've already kind of talked about, uh, we've already looked, they've looked at this list and they had some input already. And like, I think our next step was, um, you know, thinking about a workshop format. So, um, I think that would be fine. And, and right now I don't have a lot, really, anything major on that agenda for June tenth. So, um, I think that could work. I could check with them, you know, check with the chair and get back to you.
So, so workshop next Monday? Yeah, if you want to, if you want to query your chair, maybe, Elisa, and then, um, get back to us, that we can, uh, plan accordingly. Cause that is, that's, uh, what, six days?
June tenth would be.
Sorry, I wasn't talking in my mic, but I started off asking about a workshop before the meeting on the twenty-eighth just to allow for more type of feedback, uh, before coming back to the commission.
What meeting is on the twenty-eighth?
The place.
Yeah, that's only a couple of days away.
It's rescheduled for more.
I mean, alternatively, what if we, I don't know what our June fifth meeting was. Yeah, what our next meeting is, but perhaps we could have a joint workshop with um, the planning commission before our meeting. It would obviously require them coming to our meeting instead of the other way around, but, um.
So basically ask two more commissioners.
Okay.
If they have a package agenda, it sounds.
Yeah, if, if they're able to make it, though, I mean, a lot of those folks are having trouble.
Yeah, I can propose that as an option and we'll see what they, you know, what they can do.
You, you mean the one before our, our June fifth workshop, Elisa?
Is it June?
Fourth, I'm sorry, it's fourth, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so if you would like, I can check to see if they, if we will be able to attend a workshop prior to your regular meeting on June fourth.
Yes.
Okay.
What do you guys think for that one? About an hour and a half or is that? Yeah, no, it's gonna be two, maybe. Okay.
Now, that would.
Yeah, it's starting, yeah, going on to the workshop. Okay. All right, thank you very much, Elisa. And, and yeah, let us know if you, if you'd, um, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be in touch. I'll, I'll go through Mallory and, and Quinn to let you know what they say.
Perfect. Okay, that gets things moving.
Thank you.
Anything else before closing the discussion? All right, um, on to, we have a public hearing, public hearing to consider ordinance approving the amended development agreement for the alternative dwelling overlay district located at two-two-three-one South Highway one ninety-one. Back to Elisa.
All right, I thought I would have a break, but, uh, okay, so this is the, um, alternative dwelling overlay development out at Sherry Griffiths Expeditions, that facility there. And it's just our standard, um, extension request based on the fact that they will have already, their expiration date has passed from, uh, I think it was in February, in order to get site plan approval. And they just had a couple of minor changes for their site plan. They had already submitted it, but, um, there were some changes that came about after that deadline had passed. And so we weren't able to officially approve the site plan in time. Um, so now we're going ahead and asking for that extension. It's six months. Um, we'll definitely be able to get the site plan approved within that time. So, uh, it, it's, it's a pretty simple request. But it does require a public hearing.
Okay. Um, all right, then, should I open the public hearing now? I'll open that public hearing, uh, to consider ordinance approving the amended development agreement, uh, for the alternative dwelling overlay district located at twenty-two thirty-one South Highway one ninety-one. Keep the public hearing open until uh, next Wednesday at five o'clock. That is May twenty-ninth, I believe. Um, and I will, uh, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone? I don't see anyone in the chambers. Uh, is, is there anyone on Zoom who is here to be heard on, uh, this public hearing? Yeah, okay. Yeah, did you want to speak to this at all? Um, uh, Ms. Tejada, I believe you're the applicant, correct?
Um, no, not really. I'm just hoping to get the extension so we can file the final site plan.
Okay. Any, any questions for anyone here? All right, um, then I'll, uh, leave the public hearing open till Wednesday, the twenty-ninth at five o'clock. You can send a comment to uh, commissioner at Grant County, Utah dot net. Thanks. Um, all right, that is that for the public hearing. We do have, uh, I would entertain a motion. Um, to go into closed session, just like to make that motion.
I move to go into closed session to discuss pending or recently amended litigation.
All right, uh, motion to go into closed session. Commissioner Walker, second. Commissioner McCurdy, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, thanks, and we will.